New coach?
New coach. Well, not new coach.
Because America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
Okay. We do have candidates this evening for our town administrator interview. And the way we're gonna actually do it to keep the consistency, we do have few questions. And we're gonna be asking the same questions each board member to each candidate. And that being said, if you'd like to join us, Mr. Cordier, how you doing tonight?
I'm well, thank you.
As long as they have you.
Pleasure to be here.
And if you don't mind, and then we can just get going right away, I would like that.
That sounds great to me.
That's perfect. And Mr. Cordier, please tell us about yourself and why did you apply for this position? And why you believe you're prepared to show this belly gives next on a mission. You can take as much as time as you like, and please introduce yourself and.
Great. Well, first of all, again, thank you for having me in. It's an honor to be here. First thing I always try to figure out when I'm sitting across the table from someone is, yeah, what's their motivation for being here? Why are they interested? I'll tell you a little bit about myself. So I'm fifty-four years old, happily married. I have two children. I have a son who's twenty-three. He works in finance. I have a daughter who's twenty-one. She's graduating from UMass. She's an education major. She wants to be a teacher just like her mother. So one of the reasons why I mentioned that, just family to me has been a driving force behind what I've done with my career. So I've been in Northborough or I was in Northborough for twenty years. That kept me close to home. I never missed a baseball game, volleyball game, parent-teacher conference. I was home for dinner, able to go back, make my night meetings. My kids are grown now, so that constraint is no longer there. We still are pretty locked to this area. But when my children went off, I was looking for a new challenge. So I have, as you know from my resume, I do a lot of training and workshops for folks. I had done a workshop down in Foxborough for the Select Board on Financial Trend Monitoring. The manager there is retiring. I was encouraged to apply, so I applied. Once I got in there, it was a, it was a decision between me and our former employee at the town. Ultimately, I was selected. Once I got in there, I encountered some resistance for, you know, outside, people coming from outside the organization essentially. So unfortunately, over a little bit of time, I realized that this was not going to be a good fit for me. And so I chose to separate. Now, I was only there for a few months. The balance of my career, if you look back, you know, twenty-five years, I've been down with one ninety-five Beltway. I worked in Chelmsford for about six years, twenty years in Northborough. I hope you Google the daylights out of me because you won't find one negative thing out there. And that's hard to be able to say in this business. But why am I here? Why do I want to come to Bellingham now? So Northborough and Bellingham are very, very similar communities, very comparable. Similar population, similar budget, we're in the same region, dealing with a lot of the same economic development pressures. So all those things, for me, from a personal standpoint, you know, my family is situated in this region. I want to stay in the four ninety-five Beltway. And to be perfectly honest with you, I've been waiting for you guys to open this back up again. This has been the position that I've been waiting to apply for. So I'm very pleased to be here and I'm happy to answer whatever you'd like to ask me.
My name is Cordier.
Thank you. Is that my singer Cordier?
Cordier. You can't butcher it worse than I've ever heard. I've heard every version of it there.
I had the same. Mine as well, so I get it. So it's the question that I have here is really about budget formation. And, you know, based on your resume, it's pretty obvious how to form a budget. What I'd like to ask is, you know, what's the typical type of guidance that you provide department heads? When they're preparing their budget to present to the Select Board for annual town meeting? And also, what conversations do you typically have with the superintendent or school committee when preparing their budgets? If you go into that a little bit, I'd appreciate how you think through the process.
Absolutely. So as you've indicated, I, budgeting is one of my expertise. I enjoy it more than I should. But in terms of preparing a budget, the instructions I typically give to the department heads early in the process is, give me a level service budget. In other words, what does it take with increases and expenses going up, inflation and so forth? What does it take to maintain the current level of services? And then what I ask them to do is keep a, separate from that, a supplemental budget that they're able to submit to me with ask for expansion of services. It could be staffing, it could be new, new expenses or things that they might add in. And what that allows us to do internally is to build a budget initially. I says, this is what it takes to maintain what we currently have. And again, just because it was in last year's budget doesn't mean it comes forward in this budget. Everything gets scrutinized annually. But it keeps the supplementals separate from that. And I meet with each department head. In fact, I have a, I work through like a financial team. It's usually myself, assistant town administrator, the finance director and the treasurer. And we review all the budgets. We meet with each of the department heads and go through that process. In Northborough, the way I've always handled it is we start that budget process because you gotta begin early. But then what happens is right around this time of year, usually about mid-December, is when I would bring together the school committee, superintendent, finance committee, capital planning committee and the Select Board. All into one room and the financial team would present sort of a State of the Union address to them, which is, which is basically, it consists of trend monitoring, looking at where we've been for the last ten years. What we're thinking about in terms of assumptions for the upcoming budget, forecasting forward five years. And the reason why December is so critical and why that's the best time in my opinion to do it is, you've closed out the prior fiscal year, you guys have a town meeting tomorrow. You know, you're gonna finalize budgets, so budgets are still actually in motion, but you've set the tax rate. You have your free cash typically certified. Those are your data points for knowing where you actually stand today. And then how you kind of forecast forward based on the assumptions of what you see going around you. The other piece of it is every December, the state has a revenue consensus hearing. They bring in the Department of Revenue, they're bringing all the college professors, Moody's, Stanford's. And they, and they go through and they look at what do they see happening in the Massachusetts economy? So that's your first glimpse at what state aid might do. And it also gives you a little insight into your local receipts, particularly economic revenues that come locally. So it's at that meeting that we set the table for the upcoming budget cycle. So everybody has the same information, everybody can hear the assumptions about what we think we're gonna have for state aid, for local receipts. It's an opportunity to ask questions. By the way, I should also mention at that meeting, I typically include union leadership, department heads and any staff that I'd like to come. You know, part of this is to make sure that you, what the decisions that you're gonna be making moving forward are based in good information. And you want to lie into that information as early as you can. Now, to answer your question about the superintendent, usually around budget cycle, I see the superintendent more than I see my wife. We meet regularly and the communication is excellent. And if you look at my references, I can give you three superintendents that I've worked with over twenty years. Every one of them would come in here and say the relationship has been fantastic. Because we develop the information early, we share it, we talk often. And really, the key in this whole process is to develop expectations. So people don't come in thinking, you know, I'm gonna ask for a twelve percent increase. And the other thing too is you don't want to pit department heads. When I started in Northborough, it was like a zero-sum game, you know, the, the public safety officers and the schools. Everybody was sort of vying for whatever piece of that pie they could get. The process after I started was more a case of let's work together, let's develop what we think we can do for increases. And then if we do the job well, what we're able to do is have a sense of what our budgets are gonna look like for the next three, four, five years out. And what do you want as a, as a board member or as a resident, as a business? You want predictability to the extent you can. You want sustainability and you want things to be smooth. And that's what the process is that, that we've had. And as a result, I've been able to go forward to fourteen consecutive town meetings with the unanimous support of the superintendent, the school committee, the capital planning appropriations and the Select Board. And every budget and every capital project has passed for the entire time that I worked in Northborough. And that's not magic. I can fool you once, maybe twice, but I can't do it twenty years consecutively. That's a good process and good information and lots and lots and lots of communication.
Got one more question.
Yes.
But actually kind of dovetails into two, I apologize. I want to let everybody else ask their questions. During those twenty years, how many times did you approach the citizens for an override? And why?
There was a, one override during my tenure. And it was due to special education costs increase at the, at the K to eight school. Our high, high school's regional, but it was for the K to eight school. And at the end of the day, we actually wound up not using that override because revenues came in and we were able to actually absorb that. But it was a small override. I want to say it was in the order of about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, nothing, nothing significant.
Going back to your previous statement about budgeting, you talked about department heads. One of the things that's important to me, and I know other members of the Board have expressed, is the importance of public safety. One of the challenges are with public safety is, you know, who gets what slice of the pie, fire, police, et cetera. We have two fantastic chiefs in this town that seem to be working well together. I guess I want to understand if you've had a situation, if you could expand on when maybe those two department heads weren't working as well together. And what you, based on your leadership skills, were able to do to get them to start working together for common goal, which is, one, public safety, but two, you're gonna get your slice of the pie, you just might have to wait a little bit longer. Like, yeah, a little bit about if you've ever encountered a situation like that in Northborough.
Yeah, I cer- I certainly have. But just go back to the whole, why do, when department heads feel like they need to compete with each other publicly for resources? That tells me that, you know, internally, we could be doing a better job of planning and, and setting the table so people know what to expect. In my experience, department heads, they all want more resources and they all want more staff. But why? Because they care about the services they provide and they know they can do a better job with, with additional resources. But there's a sweet spot when you add resources, where you're gonna get the most return for those, for that, for that additional funding that you provide. But really, what it comes down to is they need to understand or they need to know, it feel like, these are my needs. You, the Select Board, you, you know, the town administrator truly understand my needs. They've, they've been articulated, they've been reviewed. And that you have a plan for how it's gonna fit in, it may not be this year, it may not be next year. But how is it going to fit in to the overall direction that the town is going, right? So I had a situation where I had the fire chief was seeking, you know, eight new positions. The police chief at the time, this is going back at the time, I'm telling tales outside of schools. I'm not the current sitting chiefs in Northburg right now. But, but they both, so then the police chief said, well, you know, I could use, you know, and more staff. And what we did is we looked at it, we did a full analysis. And at the end of the day, we identified the staff that was really truly needed. In the case of the fire department at the time, it was getting another person per shift so that I can run, you know, a, a three-person apparatus and a two-person ambulance. Because we do ALS in, in Northborough as well. In terms of the police, it was less of a workload issue at the time and more of a coverage issue at night. So it was an officer, officer safety issue. At the end of the day, we added two new police officers and we phased in another person per shift in the fire department to get to that staffing level that, that they needed. So it was less than was requested. But based on the information and the back and forth, we had to complete buy-in from the Select Board appropriations, the chiefs and the union members themselves, because they were involved in the discussions as well. So that was a way of getting good data, good information, and we, we did conduct the study. It did take a little bit of time. But then we were able to say, okay, we need these staff. Over the five-year financial forecast, when can we phase? And I said, I feel comfortable as your town minister, we can phase in at another body every year. That we can absorb that, that that's reasonable. And more importantly, that's sustainable. We're not gonna bring people in only to lay them off down the line. And so we did that, we added the staff, we maintained the staff. And actually, now they're somewhere to Bellingham, they're seeking additional staffing just because, particularly in, in that area, the, the need is up, the calls are up and, and they need more staff.
Thank you. I'm good. Thank you.
Oh, that wasn't too long of an answer.
No, no.
I could stay here for like five hours and talk about it. We love talking about this stuff, so.
Coming to this position, what do you see for you that would be the challenges? And maybe the opportunities in Bellingham for you?
So some of the challenges I see in Bellingham, well, let me back up. For me personally, I don't care who you are, where, and what town you go in, the initial challenge is to, to build relationships and establish trust with folks. That's the, that's the top priority. And it's hard to move forward without building those relationships. But as far as from the outside looking in right now, what are the, what are the challenges and opportunities I see? I see roughly four. One is trying to continue to balance economic development with the impacts on quality of life. These are same issues I dealt with for the last decade in Northborough. So it's great to get new development and it's great to get the new growth revenues. And a big part of our budget is based on that. But mitigating, you know, traffic, noise, visual aesthetics of the town, trying to maintain that, you know, small New England sort of look and feel. It doesn't happen by accident and, and you can't start working on that or trying to get those details and plan someplace soon enough. So, so balancing those things, I know Bellingham's done some things like the Hartford Ave overlay district where you're, you know, you're trying to keep the uses separate, trying to keep strong industrial uses from abutting directly residents. Moving things to special permit process is something that we did in Northborough, which is what you're looking at here as well. So allows the planning board to place additional conditions on development to, again, mitigate the impacts on, on the abutting residential areas. So that's one. Another is not unique to Bellingham, but just managing your capital investments over the coming years. So equipment, buildings, infrastructure, roadways, these are big-ticket items. Just before the meeting, I was talking with Dennis about the PFAS thirty-five and a half million dollar treatment facility. These are big numbers and those big numbers and that debt is going to have an impact, growing impact in your future years. And I know you know this, but planning these things out in a realistic way, it's a combination of making them sustainable, trying to keep the, when you do big projects, keeping the taxes from doing this, so you wanna, you wanna smooth the impacts. But the other piece of it too is going back to our discussion about the departments. They need to feel that whatever they need for equipment, it could be a fire truck or cruisers or dump trucks or roadways with the residents are interested, they want parks, open space, walkability. How do you show them that all the things are in a plan somewhere and there's a reasonable expectation that it's going to happen? And I think that's the difference between really good capital planning and, and some communities, not Bellingham, but have more of a wish list where you have a capital budget this year. They have a long list of projects. But the people that are on that long list don't have a real expectation of when you may or may not get to them. So that's a challenge. It's a challenge for every community right now, particularly around the area of infrastructure. Long-run solvency, pension liability, OPEB liability, other post-employments. I made great strides on these things in, in Northborough, particularly OPEB. They put over a half million dollars aside a year to get our funding ratios up. Those are hard to do because those are problems that aren't gonna manifest for decades. So people don't really want to talk about them. And then lastly, in terms of opportunities, I think there's, there's, there's opportunities for enhancement. You can always improve the communication, you can always improve the use of technology. Using, one of the things that I use everywhere I've ever managed is focusing on best practices as a way, again, to improve transparency, accountability and improve process. So I think those are opportunities that, that exist here. It was a kind of, those are the big things. There's lots of subcategories to all those things, but those are kind of, that's the big picture of what I see.
One of the other things I would like to ask, your municipal projects in Northborough that you took on, how did you secure your funding if you had to go out for extra funding for that?
So we received a grant from the State Library of Board of Trustees for a library building project. We received a ten point four million dollar MSBA grant for the elementary school that we did. We did not receive anything outside of a debt exclusion for the senior center project that we did. But I'll just talk about the MSBA project because that's a good example. When we went to the state to apply, and I know you don't have any, any school projects in the hopper. But, but when we went to the state to apply for this grant, you know, you're competing with every other municipality across the Commonwealth. One of the things, we wound up getting the grant, but one of the things that we found out afterwards in talking to staff was, one, we can show that it was part of our plan, that we had been planning for this project for over seven or eight years. It was longer than that, but in our actual documents. The other was, we can show that we had unanimous support from every member of every board committee. So there's an expectation on the part of the town that it's time to do this project. And that project fit in and a couple of years later, the next project is going to be a fire station building project. And so you, so we were able to show that this is all part of a larger plan that's well thought out and has to buy in. So that project was a twenty-five and a half million dollar project to pass with eighty percent, I'm sorry, passed unanimously at an open town meeting. And eighty percent passed without, which is pretty good for a debt exclusion. We finished that project, a hundred, one point three eight million dollars on the budget. So that's the other thing too. When, when the voters give you money, manage it well. And I brought every project in that I've worked in has come in under budget and mostly on time. There's always a punch list that seems to drag out longer than anybody wants.
Good. That's great. How about your, how do you, how do you feel about your strategies doing the negotiations with your contracts with your union workers? How do you feel that you handle that?
I've had great success. It's not easy. You know, you're dealing with people's livelihood, well-being. It doesn't get any more personal than that. So how you handle that, how you speak to people and how you present your position and the position of the board. Something that has to be done with a lot of tact and, and a lot of empathy and understanding of, of the other side of the table. So I've successfully settled, you know, every contract. I was involved in negotiations up in Chelmsford, but I have been personally responsible for twenty years in Northborough. I'll share one success, one real shining success, other than getting contracts settled where people walk away. Nobody's ever happy in the negotiation when it comes to salary. But walking away feeling like, you know, I was heard, we got what we needed and, and they feel like it, well, I hate to use the word fair, I never used the word fair when we're talking. But really, you want them to feel like it was appropriate. And I do that by using data. It's not my, it's not emotional, but we focus on good. We agree on the communities, we agree on the comps, we run the numbers. We look at workload issues and so forth. And so it's really, it's based on that. But I'll share one real success that I had. It was over multiple years and that was with our health insurance. We experienced eight, ten percent increases in health insurance. I was able to bring all of the units together. I had a, a clause in every contract. It had no teeth. It was absolutely toothless. And it just said, if asked, you will come and listen to the town administrator about health insurance. That's it. You didn't have to read anything. But I'd bring them all together. One year, we had a six hundred thousand dollar budget gap because of the health insurance. Brought them all together, made a couple of minor plan design tweaks. And we were able to close that gap. But all unions, including the school, the teachers union, they all had to agree and they were under no obligation to do so. I was able to do that three years over about a five or six-year period, but three times, bring them all together. Give them the information, say, can you work with us? Because it's in their long-term best interest too, because the alternative is if you're up against two and a half, you're looking at a variety, you're looking at reductions. And, you know, I can't eat ten or fifteen percent increases in health insurance and still, you know, meet the service demands and everything else. And it was an honest discussion and they understood. And for minor tweaks, in some cases, some of the changes I made were just, we're gonna do, we're gonna increase the deductible for imaging. But then I'll reimburse you if you're, so it was net zero impact to employees, but it saved the town two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for a very small administrative expense. So overall, I, over the last twelve years, our health insurance budget went up on average two point eight eight percent. But it requires trust and a willingness to come to the table. So I, you know, if I put one over on somebody, they're not gonna come back to the table and trust me again. The only way you do that is by building trust and being consistent and using good information and good data and just talking things through with people. But when I left, just one last thing, when I left Northborough, all the contracts were settled. There's no, zero litigation pertaining to HR or any issue with the unions when I left.
That's great. That, that's really very, very good. And your resume is time to.
In HR, what are some of the issues you have to tackle with human resources?
How long do you have? Twenty-five years.
It's your hour.
I'm still licking some of the wounds. Celtics started it. Fair enough. Look, I, I spent, when I worked in Chelmsford, when I worked in Chelmsford as the assistant, I was primarily financed. One of the reasons why I went to Northborough as the assistant initially was, the assistant is the HR director, economic development, two things I wanted to round out my resume on. So I spent six years as the HR director in Northborough. And then I've been involved in every piece of HR ever since. So I dealt with terminations, I, anything that you can possibly imagine with regard to feeling with, what is the biggest asset we have, which are, which is our people. I think the thing that tested all of us beyond anything was COVID. I had people who had children at home, didn't want to come into work, they were dealing with elderly people, elderly parents. Finding constructive ways to meet people halfway reasonably, to deal with what is an honest and, and real issue for them, I think is a challenge. And to be able to do that though, but still have consistency, so you're treating people fairly across the board, you know, you can't just say, well, you know, Hillary, you can stay home and work from home, but, but you gotta come in gym because I have to have somebody physically in the building. That was exhausting, but we were able to do it. And, and it just, like everything else, it's no magic to it. I always say it's like, it's like what we do is like water ballet, you know, above the surface, you say all this grace and beauty. But if you look just below the surface, you see those legs flailing crazily trying to get all this done. That's what it is. It's just in a, in a tremendous amount of communication. What a specific horror story. I'll change the names and tell you, but, but I know the Celtics are on this.
How do you encourage teamwork?
So one of my favorite things to do, and we talked a little bit with the screening committee about this, is I love cross-functional teams. I, outside of doing the normal things, which is we do team builders. I might bring in a consultant in to, to do exercises with, with department heads to, to build, you know, common experiences with them and build that teamwork. We do lots of things like, you know, pizza parties and picnics and bowling nights if people are interested. So those will all help in terms of building teams, a sense of teams. But I love when I have a problem or an issue to form a cross-functional team. And I'll share an example of that is coming out of the pandemic. You know, we were trying to figure out, well, how do we kind of jumpstart things in the community? Get people to talk to each other again, to physically connect again. And so I brought our family services, our police, our fire, DPW, a number of administrative support staff, we brought them together, we formed a team and, and health department and gave them a pool of money and said, program this for our community. And what they came up with, it was a program called Be Well Northborough. And it started off with having a, a festival, a fair for the kids at the end of the school year outside. And at that fair, we had all the resources available for people from mental health or, or whatever you might be going through, as well as just resources like the library and so forth. And so this is a group of people that wouldn't normally interact. I, you know, the library directors, like how many town, and how many towns does a library director get to know the police chief and the fire chief really well by interacting with them on a weekly basis or whatever it may be? So, so that's an example. Another one is the finance team. I mentioned that my finance team is usually me, the assistant, and then the treasurer, collector, the town finance director. But I also will ask, is there somebody in DVW, a business manager? Is there somebody coming up in police and fire who has aspirations to be a chief? What's one of, they can tell you the, everything you want to know about fire suppression and apparatus and pumping rates, right? But do they know budgeting? And so I'll bring them into the team and let them participate. They learn best practices in budgeting. I get another perspective. One of the, and I bring admins into that. The running joke is if you can find a typo or you can find an acronym that I haven't defined in the budget somewhere, I buy, I buy a cup of coffee. I buy a lot of coffee. I buy, I buy a cup of coffee. I buy a lot of coffee, and I'm happy to do that. But what goes away is now these people at, at levels below the department head have this broader understanding of the organization and its mission and how the pieces all fit together. That's just another example of, of a, of a cross-functional team that I've used successfully in Northborough. But I've done it on a number of things.
Not all employees want to be team players.
Really? We, I've never come across any of those.
How do you, how do you deal with employees in said situation?
You know, it's tough. Uh, you know, the hardest, so people think though, the hardest employee to manage, quite frankly, is the C, C minus employee. Right? The superstars, you wind them up, you let them go, sometimes you gotta rein them in to check in to make sure that they're on the right track with, with what you need them to be focused on. The really, really poor employees, you put them on a, a performance improvement program, they don't comply and you terminate them through the process and compliance with your personnel my laws. And I will stress, you must do that in a way that does not open the town to liability. I've never had somebody sue me for a termination and I had to let, and I've had to let people go. Because you tell them, you, you set those marks and you hold them accountable. It's the employee who does their minimum with their job, maybe a little bit above minimum, but really doesn't like to do much more than that. What do you do with those folks? I'm being honest with you, uh, sometimes it's limiting. They have to do, they have to perform. But what I try to do is I try to find, I try to match them up with things that maybe they're excited about, and it might not be directly with what they're doing. For instance, like work on a budget team or work on a, a cross-functional team that's doing programming for the town, you know, uh, post-COVID. Or um, there's always initiatives. Uh, another one that I did was, we used to have a, a very long, ugly annual town report. And nobody ever read it, we printed them, and then in a couple of years, we recycled them. Right? I said, wait, I think we can do better. And so I brought a group together to uh overhaul the annual report. I had done one similar to this in Chelmsford. Where we turned it into a calendar and we made the information concise. And every time you flip the page, a new department was, was featured for that month. And you had great concise information, and it was relevant information, town meeting, when is trash not gonna be, things that you normally go to the website and look for. But anyway, I, I had somebody in a department that was not very motivated. Uh, but she was a very creative person, and I brought that person onto that team. I, I never, I never thought they had that kind of enthusiasm or, or energy. But, so you try to find things. We have to take care of our day-to-day, and we all do things in our job that we'd rather not do or we don't find pleasurable, but you have to do it. But if you can create opportunities for people uh in ways that still benefit the organization but might not be directly in line with what their job description is. Other tasks as assigned is what I refer to a lot. But if you can get them to do that, it's amazing what that can do for them. And then lo and behold, the work product in the department that they were scared, that they were uh appointed in bounced up and things improved. Yeah, I, I wish I could say I had a hundred percent success, success rate. I don't. I've, I've had determining people like any good manager has. I think the biggest thing though is that you need to make sure that if somebody isn't doing their job, that they're held accountable, because nothing will demoralize the team faster than I'm busting my, my, my rump and so are the people around me, but that that person over there is not carrying their weight. That will demoralize the team faster than.
Thank you very much. Uh, Mr. Go there, um, I see you did quite a bit of study. It's obviously, um, one of the biggest topics in uh Bellingham is um economic development. And um, what kind of opportunities you see, what, what kind of issues you think you might have? Going forward.
Sure. So I touched on the need to balance economic development with the impacts on particularly the residential areas, but also in a, in a bigger sense, the, the character of the community that you wanna see through your vision. You know, you, I assume wanna maintain that a small New England town sort of feel. You'd like to have economic development, but you also wanna have open space. You know, you'd like to have traffic flow nicely, but you'd like to probably have walkability uh through the town as well. Those are all things, they're heavily based. I did read your master plan. Uh, your twenty twenty master plan. Uh, I see some of the things that the planning board is doing that is, that moves in that, in that direction. Um, but, uh, it just, it really comes down to trying to look ahead as much as you can and to mitigate the, the, that, try to implement your vision, but mitigate it. And it's tough because usually when towns are developing fast and quickly, like Northborough did and like Bellingham experiences, once the application is, is in or the threat of the application is, that project's grandfathered, you've lost that opportunity. So uh, if you can engage residents uh early, if you can find particularly areas where residential is, is connecting up with commercial and industrial, find ways to create transition zones, find ways to, uh, again, using special mer, permit process where appropriate, local conditions, turning restrictions, uh, truck exclusions, these are all things that, that we've, we've used in Northborough. Is it perfect? No, no, not at all, because people have property rights and you know, your zoning, every time you go to move that zoning to encourage or protect something, if somebody owns that piece of property, it's a window of time where they can get an application in and, and secure. So you might wanna prevent warehouses in a particular area. Soon as you propose that, they just have to file their grandfathered, but down the road, you'll be able to protect that. So it requires a lot of community outreach, a lot of discussion, a lot of foresight. Because you've got one or two opportunities a year to go to town meeting to, to implement things like the, you know, the Hartford Avenue adaptive boulder lane. And that's a great example of what you can do, but it takes a lot of energy and a lot of, a lot of foresight to do that.
Appreciate it. Thanks for the answer you give us.
Um, if appointed, what would you hope to be able to say that you were, were your accomplishments during the first year?
During the first year? Uh, I'll start with what everybody critically would look at as your, your, your first ninety days. So uh initially, uh, in the first thirty days, it's gonna be spent just drinking from a fire hose, just meeting with every uh person that I can, meeting with staff, uh, select board members individually, to find out what you're focused on, what's important to you. Um, but boards and committees, civic group, meeting with legislators, meeting with the Chamber of Commerce. Um, one thing I'll just mention, uh, in case you don't realize this is I spend my personal time going across the state, training other communities. Why? Because it energizes me. I like meeting with groups. I like being out in the public. I'm comfortable speaking to the Boy Scouts or to the Mass Municipal Association's annual meeting. So I'm, I'm happy to be out there, but initially I need to meet folks. The next, you know, sixty, ninety day window, uh, will continue to do that, but really you've got uh, town meeting, budget, just by virtue of the time of the year, I'm being realistic. And we need to put budgets together, refine budgets, capital plans, town meeting warrants and so forth. So between now, me getting settled, getting to know everybody, um, getting a good sense of the community's strengths and weaknesses and priorities, uh, we'll get through spring town meeting, take a breath, and then I would see kind of coming back over the summer. Um, based on everything that I've been able to absorb, uh, and start working with the select board on what are your what are your bigger goals and objectives? What are your plans for the upcoming year? What are things that we need to start thinking about now to start implementing in the upcoming budget? Um, but set a real clear set of expectations and goals and objectives that will flow up and down the organization with department heads. I mean, ultimately, I mentioned one of the opportunities is a real, if, if the board were open up, you know, a, a, a very formal strategic planning session. Um, one of the issues when you get into the budget is trying to make sure that what the department heads are proposing uh, is in line with what the priorities are of the community. So the priorities of the select board. But it shouldn't just be yours, as you know, it's the priorities of the community. You need to have a way of taking all that in in a way that, that in a way that you can synthesize it and prioritize it and then communicate it back through me to the department set. These are the things that we really wanna see happen. And then develop measures so that you can track it and report on it on a regular basis.
Thank you. Um, you've already highlighted some of this already, but working with this luck board, how would you communicate? I'll give you the opportunity to speak. How would you communicate on, um, with the board on large and small issues?
So uh, it's funny, because I've had a lot of board members over twenty-five years. I have some that are like, if something's happening, I want you to call me. I have others who say, just send me an email. Some just wanna text. Um, part of that is when we sit down initially, I have a list of questions that we go through, and one of the, one of the things I wanna know is, how do you wanna be communicated to? Do you, when do you expect a phone call from me? Now, as far as projects and day-to-day stuff, we should be giving regular routine updates at select board meetings, uh, putting stuff out on the internet, uh, through the website, updating the public. So this should be a regular flow of information going to you about day-to-day things. And a lot of that stuff should coincide with what the priorities and the goals and objectives are that we agreed on as a, as a, between the two of us as a, as a, as a group. Um, but as far as individual board members, I haven't, some board members that wanna stop by once a week in person, have a conversation. I have some, I've had board members that I never see or talk to. Yet, uh, they feel like they know, they have everything they need and they know what they, 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 uh, they know everything that they need from me, they're getting it, and they don't require a lot of, of follow-up. So as I always say to department heads, if you work with a board or committee, it's our job to take a hundred percent responsibility for the relationship, the communication. If, I need to figure out how you communicate and adapt to that, not the other way around. So that's a process that'll take place. Um, generally, uh, what I've found has worked well recently is if there's an issue uh, that's of, of emergency, or not emergency, but, but important, I will send a group text. And usually that text might say, hey, there's a fire over here, there's a, an emergency event over here. Um, please see email more detail, and then you go to emails more detail. If you feel like you need more information af, after that, you can call me. Um, but again, uh, you know, some folks, I just, I'll adapt to within reason. Uh, I've also had board members who kinda come in every day. Had a great retired doctor one time, he wants to come in and sit in the office for two hours a day and chat, very happy and yeah, listen, you know, love spending time with you, glad we got a great relationship, but you know, you pay me to do a job and you really want me to be doing that job.
My last one.
Yes.
This is the big one.
Okay.
What happens when you differ with the board on a situation? How would you handle that?
I'll share an example. Uh, I've only differed with the board one time in, in twenty years in Northborough. And it pertained to a public safety employee who had an OUI. And uh, the chief wanted that individual terminated. I concurred with that. I felt like that's what was, uh, that's what was needed and warranted in this particular situation. The select board however chose not to terminate. They chose, uh, they did not take the recommendation of the chief or, or myself. So at the end of that, we were left with employee that we openly, publicly said we wanted to terminate. So, but the bottom line is the board made the decision. So the chief and I met and said, in good faith, we're gonna, we're gonna operate this, we're gonna give this employee every chance that they should have, that, that the board wanted them to have. And um, we set a performance improvement program and required certain attendance at certain programs and so forth. And uh, at the end of the day, I'll tell you, five years later, I promoted that individual. Because it was, they completely turned around. I wish I could say everybody is capable of doing that. But we implemented that in good faith, and at the end of the day, it was the right decision. And uh, and I'm glad it worked out for everybody. Uh, but I tell you, in the moment, it, it was hard, but you know, if, unless you ask me to do something that's illegal or unethical, it's my job to try to convince you if I really feel strongly that it's not the right decision. But as a board, as individuals, but as a board, you make a decision. Our job is to, is to implement that. In, in good faith, in good faith.
Okay. So while we're talking about that, let me, uh, let me add something else. Um, so what if during a board meeting, there is a motion to enter executive session? But you strongly believe a subject, subject is not exempt. And um, they don't have the right to go into the executive session. And um, how do you handle that situation?
I would approach it from the perspective that the board wants to do something, and they may not be aware that that particular action would violate the law. In that case, I would wanna protect the board. And I would wanna protect the town from liability, and I would just, just state to the board, listen, I understand that you'd like to do that, but I, when I am at a meeting, I can, I always have tea. These are the ways you can go into executive session with me. And I would just say, uh, it doesn't appear to fit into one of these, I would caution the board against doing that, uh, and uh, and uh, you know, again, if you have the trust and the respect, I would hope that the board would not do that. If, if warranted, I'd go, we could take a recess, I could have a discussion with the chair. But really, I think, again, in my experience, boards and committees wanna do the right thing. And when they're told clear information that this is not legal, I'd be shocked if a board with that information would continue down that path. That doesn't, you know, you know, so that's what I'm here for, in part, to keep you out of troubles and, and to make sure that the town has no liability uh, or minimal liability. And uh, that's how we handle.
Thank you very much. Um, I do have another question. Um, if we were to background search on you, is there anything we might find? Or um, or which you would like to address at the, at this time, if you haven't already?
No, I'll tell you this, uh, outside of what I've already disclosed to you, which is I went to Foxborough, it wasn't, it didn't work out. That's a few months. I would hope you'd weigh two and a half decades, and I hope you talk to every, every person in my reference and do every Google search you can. Because there is nothing out there. I pride myself on, on operating ethically and with integrity and um, and I will continue to do so. And uh, so there's nothing you're going to find.
Okay. I don't think we have any other questions, but I would like to ask you, I think we got ten more minutes.
You have some time.
Yes, if you like, um, have closing remarks.
Do I have a question?
Yeah, actually. Let's go back to that, Mr. Martinez, another question.
Yeah, Mr. Go there, you've mentioned a lot tonight about the MMA.
Yes.
Um, and I did my own little search, just as you said, Google search the whole bit, and I see that you're involved. Could you express, could you spend some time talking to us a little bit, maybe five minutes and give yourself final? Talk about your involvement in MMA and give you a little bit more on the training and the various training that you offer is your work. I'd just like to hear a little bit more about your involvement in MMA. I'd be happy to do that. You know, it's one of the things is I stayed in Northbrook for twenty years because it was, is the right thing for my family, but that doesn't mean I was um provisional at all. I was very involved across the state. So I served on, I've served on the uh Mass Municipal Managers Association Executive Board. I served on the MMA, the Mass Municipal Association Board of Directors. I've served uh as, on the governor's local government advisory committee going into Boston and meeting with the lieutenant governor on a monthly basis to talk about the whole breadth of issues facing municipalities in the Commonwealth. Um, and then I also, as you know, I'm an instructor. I teach at Suffolk University and my passion is budgeting, so I teach best practices in public budgeting. I teach uh financial trend monitoring. I teach um, uh, financial forecasting and capital planning. And so those things, those four things, uh, I have spent over the last decade. Um, if you have folks on your finance committee, uh, who attend the Association of Town Finance Committee annual workshops, they may have seen me. Um, so I do, I teach best practices in budgeting there. Uh, and I also, uh, over, usually based on those trainings that I do for professional groups, uh, managers will ask me to come in, or finance committees will ask me to come in, or select boards will ask me to come in and give them a lot of training. Um, but I do this because I am a budget nerd. I do this on my own time, and I'll tell you why. Is because I'm very passionate about local government. And what I wanna see happen is I wanna see local government function well. I wanna minimize unnecessary conflict. Uh, and I do that through following best practices by making sure that the information is good and the process is good. When somebody doesn't like what you're doing, you'll, you'll hear information and process complaints. You'll hear me saying, so uh, you know, I vote for that project, but I don't know if those numbers are really truly good or process complaints. And I vote for that project, but nobody asked me what I thought, who made these decisions and so forth. When you implement national best practices, it minimizes those, those types of complaints at town meeting. People still will not, they don't necessarily need to agree. People still will not, they don't necessarily need to agree and that's okay. But if they feel like the information was good and they were heard, they won't go away happy, but they don't go away really mad. My experience with somebody goes away really mad, they get in the board and they try to fire the town administrator. So this is my self-preservation interest to try to make sure that people feel good about the process, even though they weren't necessarily the winning. Majority vote, because that's just how democracy works. But, uh, most recently, uh, I served as the chairman of the Fiscal Policy Committee. For the Mass Municipal, Municipal Association, so if you attend the annual conference in January, so in twenty twenty-three. Um, I was the presenter at that annual conference, it was the only resolution that came forward out of all the subcommittees. Uh, for adoption, uh, at the meeting and, um, and again. I like to be involved at that level because. Um, I get to hear when they're thinking about the Student Opportunity Act, which Bellingham is a major beneficiary of that, Northborough wasn't. Uh, this is the extra funding going to the schools. Um, I heard about that when the legislators were putting that together, they came in and presented, we got to ask questions. I knew exactly how that was gonna impact my community long before it ever got approved and or funded. And so being involved at those, in those professional associations and at that level. Uh, allows me to always have my fingers, uh, out there, my tentacles out there. And, cause I'm constantly scanning for what might come that might impact our organization. If you're not involved, if you only stay in your town. All of a sudden, this stuff's gonna show up and you're gonna have to catch up, usually by time. Most managers are aware of something that's happening at the state level, I've had an inside track and been talking about it for about six months. Thank you, so.
Yeah, cool, thank you. Um. You got a couple moments, if you'd like to have any closing remarks, please.
Um, I just, it's been a, it's been a real pleasure getting to know, uh, Bellingham. Um, I've spent a lot of time, I've read. Your master plan, I've read your warrants, your finance committee, I've read your bylaws, your charter, I've watched meetings. Um, I feel like the town of Bellingham is a good fit for me. I hope at the end of this process, you feel like I'm a good fit for you. Uh, as you can tell, I'm not one to jump around. Um, I work consistently in one place, uh, I'm treated well and I treat other people well, it goes really, it goes, goes for a long time. So I'm not looking to bounce around, uh, I'm not running away from anything. I'm coming here because I really think that this would be a good fit for me and I feel like. Based on the comparability of Northborough to Bellingham, that I can walk in and contribute day one. That you're not gonna train, I'm not gonna need training, I'm gonna need. A lot of help understanding and learning about Bellingham, but you're not gonna bring someone in who. Doesn't have experience budgeting, doesn't have experience negotiating with big, a biotech firm or Amazon or mitigation. Uh, uh, issues and things like that, I've experienced doing all that, managing projects. So in that respect, when you look at the community profile that you all put out, you spent a lot of time putting that together. I went down and I think I'm a very good match for what you're looking for. The last thing I'll say is, um. Again, this region is my sweet spot. Personally, this is where I wanna work, I don't wanna work, I've had offers in Boston, I've had job offers out in the Berkshires. I don't wanna work in Boston. There's a size community that is, feels good and is a right fit for me. In a region that I'm familiar with, where I have a lot of networking and a lot of colleagues and a lot of support. And Bellingham is dead in that sweet spot. So, um, the last thing I would say to you is, uh, I'm twenty-three minutes away. And I'm immediately available to work. You got a lot of stuff coming up fast, you know, budgets, you got somebody, uh, who is, uh, wants to go on vacation, Dennis took off. He said, if you're going on vacation for two months, I'm like, you better leave me your phone number, you do. But you need someone to come in and really get going, uh, but we'll take the time to make this unique. To Bellingham and I think, um, I feel it on that side, I, I can be that definitely, so. Uh, we appreciate it for your time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, um, you were very thorough and, um, and thorough in your mentions and, uh, appreciated by everybody. Thank you, I look forward to working with you.
Thank you so much.
I'll try to watch the obstacle course, you said.
That's set up for me, thank you.
That's your chairman.
Thank you.
Chairman Mayans, um, since we have five minutes.
Yeah.
That, uh, any of us have used a, a bio break, we can use a bio break, five minute reset please.
I can have one of them.
Are you okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Powers, good evening, how are you, how you doing?
Good evening, we're doing well and please call me Joe.
Joe?
Thank you.
Pleasant to have you. Um, what we gotta do is actually, we have all, um, bunch of questions and, uh. We gonna be asking the same questions, um. Like another candidate we had right before you and, um. So if you okay with that and, uh, we'll, uh, take the lead and then, uh, go for it.
Sounds good to me, absolutely, fire away.
Perfect, um. Mr. Powers or Joe? Um, please, uh, tell us about yourself and, uh, why did he apply for this position and, uh, why you believe. Um, you are prepared to serve as Bellingham's next town administrator and, um. Take as much as time as you need.
Very good, thank you and, um, Joe Powers, uh, Harrodtown Administrator. Uh, for the last five years, I've been on Harrow's for five and a half years, uh, in the administration department before that. Um, I'm here this evening as a, um, a self-about government geek. Um, I will admit that I have been, uh, entranced and involved in government going back to my days in high school. Um, I actually had the pleasure back in high school to serve as a representative from the high school to the school comedian, that's truly when I got the bug. Um, that's also when I discovered Robert's Rules of Water and I, I love the, the parliamentary procedure and the protocol that goes with that. Um, but my career in, uh, local government and public service really began, um, when I got sworn in at, on my twenty-first birthday. Uh, to the school comedian, so that was thirty-five years ago. Uh, and I've been a part of local government ever since in a variety of roles. Um, I would describe myself as a municipal government expert, if you will, um, with a proficiency or a strength and. Uh, passion for, uh, governance, so bylaws and charters and things of that nature. Um, with a strong financial background, both, uh, public sector and private sector. Uh, when I wasn't in either elected positions, that's really the first half of my career, if you will. Uh, where I had served on school committee, I had served as elected town clerk. I served on select board and I served as moderator of representative town meeting. Uh, the second half of my career has been appointed and I've been appointed positions since two thousand nine, most notably town clerk. And like I say, now town administration. Um, when I was, uh, an elected official, my real job, if you will, my day-to-day job was in corporate banking. And so I learned a lot and, uh, certainly the financial markets, I worked on Wall Street. Uh, supporting CEOs and asset servicing and things of that nature. So I learned, I think, some best practices in the private sector, uh, I try to incorporate those into the public sector. Um, and I think I have a good balance of those leadership roles that I've had. Uh, and certainly, um, hope I can demonstrate a strong proficiency in administration. Uh, what brings me to Bellingham quite simply is Bellingham. Um, I, um, am impressed by the fact that you have a long-serving town administrator. Um, I was fortunate on Cape Cod to have been mentored by, um, three individuals in my time on Cape Cod for the last ten years. Who each of them, uh, served with distinction for over thirty years. Uh, they're considered white whales, if you will, they're, they're rare, so for you folks to have that and, and Dennis. Uh, speaks to the stability of your town, uh, it certainly speaks to Dennis's abilities and leadership. So I see a community that, uh, I know I can step right into. Uh, even though I come to you from a resort town on Cape Cod, um, a lot of our demographics and a lot of our finances are the same. Um, you exceed the town of Harwich slightly in population, uh, both residents, uh, students and things of that nature. We have more roads to plow and to treat than you folks, but otherwise, um, when you really look at all the, the, uh, the financial indicators. Um, we're pretty similar. Um, so for me, uh, seeing a stable environment, uh, seeing an opportunity to step in. Uh, and, and what is, uh, from my perspective, a positive development. An individual who gets to retire on their own time and in their own way. Um, I'm excited by the opportunity to help come right in and pick up where, where Dennis leaves off and where the team is. Um, I have no doubt that the projects you have going on are similar to the projects I'm working on. For you folks, you're dealing with water, for us, we're dealing with wastewater, which is what you have to call it in the cave. Uh, we know it off-cave is sewer, um, so there's a lot of similarities in that regard, so that's why, uh, I'm here tonight. Uh, I'm excited to be here and I'm excited at the opportunity, so thank you.
Thank you very much.
Uh, Mr. Martinez?
Sure. Joe, it's nice to meet you, thanks for, for coming in tonight.
Thank you.
Uh, so it's obvious you have experience with preparing and developing town budgets. Um, I'd like to know about your process, if you can explain to the board that your process, you go, or you go within. Undertakes have been, uh, you know, starting in the fall. Meeting with departments, etc., can you explain your budget process?
Um, sure, so for me. Um, I have worked on budgets for the, for the bulk of my career, whether it was school committee, select board, but as. Town administrator, I've, I've really been informed and follow, uh, the requirements of our, of our Harwich Charter. So in Harwich, the town administrator is responsible for all budgets, even though we have a finance strike. So, uh, what that means is I'm responsible for compiling all of the budgets that come before town meeting. Uh, which includes the operating budget for the town, as well as the capital plan and recommendations on use of free cash and all of that. Uh, when I, um, succeeded my predecessor, uh, five years ago. Uh, the first thing I did is I, I put a number on the whiteboard in my office. Um, and that was the number of days until town meeting. So for me, I truly begin my budget process right after annual town meeting in the spring. Uh, so we have the annual just in the spring, uh, we typically don't rely upon specials. Uh, in a formalized way that you folks do, so for me, the budget process starts right after the last one began. Um, or, excuse me, was voted by town meeting. Um, and, and what I, what I've tried to emphasize to my team and the reason for that is. Uh, and that's sort of, uh, is my overall philosophy on government as well as budgeting is. All roads lead to town meeting, uh, I think the most important thing we can all do is craft a budget that. Um, is indicative of the priorities and, and the things that we wanna focus on as a community. But it's a continuum, i- it starts in the spring. Uh, you analyze what went well at town meeting, what may not have gone well and, uh, you listen to the direction of the voters. So practically speaking, what I do is I do a town meeting debrief. Uh, we're the first Monday inmate and so I usually get my department heads together before, uh, Memorial Day. And we do a debrief of, uh, the budget articles, the appropriating articles. Um, and more often than not, we've been fortunate to be successful. Um, but we look for, uh, commentary that came from town meeting to try and inform what we're gonna focus on going forward. Uh, then for, uh, June, what we talk about is, uh, making sure they're ready to execute on the appropriations. That were approved at town meeting, that the funds will be available July first. Uh, and that sort of closes out the previous year fiscal year, if you will. We do, or I do a departmental check-in right after, uh, Labor Day. You know, we really don't have a lot of data for the first quarter of the fiscal year, uh, but we have enough to see what the trends are and, uh, for us. Uh, local receipts are critical, so we're always watching our estimates on local receipts and we do our first major check-in on that just after Labor Day. From there, the charter informs that, uh, capital outlay, they do, excuse me, the community preservation does their process. Uh, for October first, so I'm working with my department heads that are putting in for community preservation in September. Ahead of their preliminaries in October. Um, I am, uh, responsible for the capital outlay plan, both the five-year plan and the budget. Um, I'm able to rely upon the capital outlay committee and that's the language in the charter, so I rely upon capital outlay. Um, to be the, uh, the public face of the requests for capital, uh, we generally. See anywhere from, uh, outside of major projects, anywhere from five to eight million in capital more often, uh, year over year. And so, uh, that takes up the bulk of the fall. While we're doing that, uh, I'm working with the finance director, we're analyzing, um, previous year, so. Books usually close, say, middle of October, so now we have the actuals for the previous fiscal year, we analyze that. Um, and then I start developing, um, a budget message. That I'm required to give the select board some guidance on and then two weeks later, they give it back to me as a formalized message. And so that's when we really start the monthly, uh, department head meetings to start, we have the message. Uh, I give them guidance and direction on how to build the budgets. And then I let them do what they do, they're the subject matter experts, they know the programs that they wanna have and they wanna continue. Um, but we ramp it up as the time gets closer to town meeting, so. Uh, there's informal communications, say, from July through September and it gets more formalized, uh, throughout the fall. And then the charter requires that, um, the capital outlay plan be presented in December. The, uh, full warrant be presented in February. And then, uh, there's a period of time where I sort of. Present everything to the select board and now they take the budget as their own, the charter says that. They accept the administrator's budget with or without amendment. And then hand it over to the finance committee, now our finance committee is advisory only, so that's the select board by charter that's presenting the budget. Um, however, uh, the way we've done it in my tenure is we, we get everybody together on a Saturday in March. Typically, it's a day that snows, but we still get through it, um, without fail. And what we do is we dedicate a Saturday to have, um, any of the department heads that wanna be heard. And any of the departments that the select board and the finance committee wanna hear from. And that's the last major review, if you will, of the budget and then we just finalize the warrant and. We have informal community meetings for, uh, March and April and then the big show first Monday in May.
Can you expand on that, uh, as far as working, general government, working with the school committee and working with the superintendent?
So for us, we have a, a regional school system, that is the town of Harwitz and the town of Chatham. Uh, we also host and are a member of the Cape Cod Regional Vocational Technical School. Um, so we do have those, but the, the big budget and the comparable budget, uh, is on the Monmouth Regional School District. So what we do there is I partner with my, my colleague Jill Goldsmith in Chatham, she's the town manager. Um, the select board in Harwitz appoint the finance director, so the finance director and I are colleagues, if you will. Jill is able and has span of control over the finance director, but we both meet regularly with our finance counterpart. And then with the superintendent and his finance counterpart. Um, I think that's worked very well, my predecessor started it, so we, we meet monthly. Um, uh, throughout the year to talk about the budget and in a similar fashion. What just happened, how are we looking and going from there. Um, so it is a, it is a collaborative conversation. Um, I would say that the difference would be that it's a regional school district, we are the larger of the two communities, so. We bear roughly seventy-four percent of the costs. Um, but, um, you know, Chatham, uh, we'd be nothing without Chatham and their relationship there, so that we're always trying to strike that balance. Um, different than what I'm used to, my, my muscle memory, if you will, is, um, town of Brantree, single school district. Um, as the former chair of the school committee, I, um, fondly remember my. Uh, regular meetings with the superintendent, but that's how we do it in the two-town regional right now.
Great, um. You know, leadership skills are critical at this time, can you talk a little bit about your leadership skills and? Just, you know, how you bring people together, types of things that you do within town hall, really wanting to expand on some of your leadership skills.
Sure, um, at the fear of sounding tacky or corny, I will tell you that, um. Um, I, I try to be first, um, in every aspect of my life, a leader by example. Um, you know, I, I want people to see me working, uh, and being diligent at the job. Um, I, um, I want to treat others as, as I like to be managed, if you will. Uh, rely upon subject manager experts to be the experts, but, but be there as a leader to, to step in if needed. Uh, if asked, uh, and if noticed. Uh, I'm, despite my, um, fondness for talking. Um, I would probably describe myself as more of a quiet leader. Um, I don't need to be out there leading the parade per se, um, I have no problem doing that, but I'd rather have a team approach. And so I believe in management by walking around. I believe in leadership by being visible and present and by being transparent and open. And so I rely greatly on communication. And for me, communication isn't just me speaking. It's the serial dyadic. It's the conversations, it's hearing the other voices and taking that all into consideration. I was attracted to local government at a young age because I wanted to be a leader. And I think, you know, I'm constantly evaluating and reevaluating my skills and making sure that I am approachable and accessible. I rely upon those folks that I've either inherited or that I've hired because I know that they have skills of their own to be subject matter experts. I always want to be collegial and I never want to be afraid to step in to lead as necessary. So a quiet leader that can be in front, but I prefer to be in the middle or around everybody.
Okay, Mr. Chair, I'm good. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yes. Joe, what do you see as your, as like the opportunities and maybe the challenges that you would find in a position in Bellingham? What do you think this position will hold for you?
So I think the challenge is going to be any challenge where you start new. My mom has always said that it takes a year to learn anything. And so, you know, there's going to be, not necessarily a challenge, I think it's a challenge and an opportunity. I know you are a Norfolk County town, and I was born and raised in Norfolk County. I know of Bellingham, but I don't know Bellingham. So I think there's going to be a natural need to learn the local flavor, the local culture, the local language, if you will. So that's a challenge to start out because you're learning new names and faces and titles and all that. But as I say, when you've gone through that year and you've had the sheer experiences, you know, that challenge sort of goes to the wayside. I think the opportunities are the same for what brought me here. I analyzed your town quite a bit before I decided to put in as a candidate. And I analyzed, you know, the fact that I would be relocating to this area. This is not something I'd be commuting for, so there's commitment there. So I think there's going to be an opportunity to immerse myself in a solid community. And I think find out pretty quickly the things I'll be able to add immediate impact on and then find the things that I'm going to need to rely upon others to help me. So opportunities and challenges, you know, I know that, well, I should say that before I went over the bridge, I was very well-versed in local aid. And I was shocked when I went over the bridge that there is no such thing as local aid or state aid over there. We have too much value in the land, if you will. And so that's required me over the last ten years to really understand local receipts. And now we're at a point where I feel comfortable with the assumptions and the assessments of local receipts. Coming back to a non-island-based community, if you will, knowing that local aid is a critical part of your funding, you know, it's going to be a little bit of a reminder that I'm back in the land of local aid as well as local receipts and property taxes. So I think the language changes, if you will, the culture changes, those will be challenges to a small degree. But I'm pointy enough to believe that challenges are opportunities to learn. So that's where I turn challenge into opportunity. I hope I've answered the question well. Thank you.
How about municipal projects? Have you had any municipal projects where you were that you had to go out and find outside funding for?
How would you define outside funding?
Well, not like an alternative funding that you had to find if you didn't have the funding within-house that you would have to go out and try and secure funding, either overrides or...
Oh, thank you. Okay. So meaning not the traditional funding sources? Yeah. We in Harwich, and certainly I've made it a priority over my five years, that one portal that the state refined for grants is a godsend. You know, when we have our manager administrator meetings on the Cape, we can, the good news is we're signing so many grant contracts that that's the good news. The bad news is it's the same forms over and over again. But I've come to rely greatly on the grant portal in that regard. And then my team, trying to find other opportunities from non-traditional sources for state and federal, certainly for public safety, you find a lot of those. And then really, what we've been doing lately is, I think this is what you might be getting to, but we established two special purpose stabilization funds during my tenure. And so we were one of the last towns on Cape Cod to increase the hotel motel tax to a level that everybody else was at and the Airbnb tax. And so what we did is we established these special purpose stabilization funds with the addition to the hotel motel tax. For me, I'm comfortable with that because, you know, we were the last to get to the level on Cape Cod. So I know it's a tax increase, but I think it was a savvy move by the town. And then the air market directly for these special purpose stabilizations. And for us, they were two of our three biggest priorities, wastewater and affordable housing. And so today, I think we officially adopted these back in October of twenty-two. And as of my most recent report, we have one point five million in each of those. And because they're special purpose stabilization, when we adopted that, it required a two-thirds vote, like a stabilization. Governor Healy knocked that down to a straight majority. But we've always had the mindset of that's separate and distinct. It's a stabilization. We look at stabilization as extraordinary funds, so we don't rely upon them for the operating budget, per se. But I think that's an example of where we've established another funding source. The other one that I'm working on that I think, I haven't seen that you folks have had it yet either. It's, I think, fairly new in its implementation, but the WIF, the Water Infrastructure Investment Fund. And so I've been looking at that because Cape Cod, everyone's sewer-ing. And we don't have better funds like you folks do right now. We just are doing it through the taxes. So I've been talking to the board about going for that state-level water, which can also be used for wastewater, infrastructure investment fund. And what some towns have done is reallocated a portion of community preservation money. So if you're at three percent, you might knock that down to two and use that one percent to fund the WIF. But as you're looking at PFAS and all of the water issues that you're dealing with that we're going to have to deal with on Cape Cod, something like the WIF could really, over time, be a great resource that's separate and distinct. So it is a diversion of tax money, per se. But I would consider that to be other sources. So grants of every sort and then funds that can build up over time and be there, not for extraordinary needs or emergencies, per se, but critical project needs.
Very good. How about resolving labor disputes? How are you at dealing with any labor disputes you've had to come up with?
So the way I answer that with the search committee is we have eight collective bargaining associations in our town that's slightly smaller than yours. I believe you guys have five, not including the school, so to speak. I'm very proud of the fact that right before, during, and after COVID, we got all eight on the same schedule because they were all variable. So we made a conscious decision. We, of course, being select board, myself, and Labor Council to get everybody on the same schedule because I think that works well. We enjoy labor harmony. We are, however, are also on the cusp of all of those contracts coming up for renewal next fiscal year. Generally speaking, I think I've had strong relations with the collective bargaining groups. We, as a town, did lose one case in arbitration for a clerical union. But otherwise, I think things, you know, there's a good give and take, and I think there's strong relations with those groups. I know that you folks are looking for contracts to be renewed, and so are we. So I'm already prepped and have that in my mind.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mike?
Right. In HR today, what are some of the issues you have to tackle with human resources?
Well, it's funny you should bring that up in the sense that we just, I just finished a hiring of a human resources generalist for the first time in our town's structure. It's a role that the assistant administrator and I were desperate to bring in because we didn't have a traditional, I always viewed from the corporate sector, human resources should first be a safe place for employees to go, even if they need to harangue about the crazy town administrator, whatever the case may be. So what we were looking for for human resources is a true dedicated source that employees can go to. And employees of every level, town administrator, clerical, everything in between. And so what we're hoping that role will bring for us is better onboarding, much better supportive benefits. But really, the employee assistance, if you will, not just EAP, but truly a place where the employee can go to be heard. And then eventually it comes to me and I'm personnel, and there might have to be negotiations with an association. But we haven't had it so structured yet that I could speak about it in the way that I do it in the private sector. But we're very excited to have a generalist coming on board, so.
Very great HR here in Bellingham.
How do you encourage teamwork?
Well, first through communication. And by that, I mean getting together as a group and sitting around. And if there needs to be pizza, and we talk about it, you know, as far as the department heads go, we'll do things like that. I think you encourage teamwork by being open to it and by creating a framework that supports it. For me, my natural instinct is to immediately think of my twenty-something direct reports. So that's when I, you know, that's my team, if you will, of managers. In the administration department, there are three, excuse me, three other individuals. And so that's the team on the other side of the double doors. So I think you foster an environment where people can be themselves within the HR boundaries that we might have just talked about before. But really, it's trying to establish a framework and a foundation where people can feel comfortable. Because if you're truly going to be a team, we're all working for the same goal. We're all working for the same vision. So you want people to have a comfort level. And then I think, for me, I do it by leading the team. Listening, as I've said before, to their voices, to their opinions, to their thoughts. And always being mindful that somebody needs to be in charge and make sure that the team is willing as a team. But I think it's critical to create a framework where people feel comfortable being a team.
Lastly, not all employees want to be team players. How do you deal with an employee in that situation?
You have a frank conversation. And I like how those questions were set up. For me, you know, I was thinking about it the other day. I was talking to some of my colleagues and one of them had said that they really like the environment because it feels like a family. And I said, I'm so sorry to hear that. We're not a family. We're a team. Because family has a whole different dynamic. And team for me is we're all working for the same organization. So that organization is the big team, if you will. So if there's somebody that doesn't want to be a team player, there needs to be a frank conversation. What is it that's missing? And it may be on the management side. There may not be clear goals and direction. But success happens when we all work in the same direction for the same purposes. So I would do everything I can to encourage that person to embrace the team, but make sure I'm also giving the support and the guidance and the clear directives where they can feel like that actually will work. I mean, Mr. Chair, that's all I have.
Thank you very much. Economic development, which is a big topic in Bellingham. And what kind of opportunities you might see as well as issues? And also, I think you just mentioned that the Community Preservation Act?
Yes.
And you said you were a member of it. And you mentioned that from the three percent, take the one percent. What do you, how do you guys implement that and what have you have done with it over the years?
So first, to the community preservation, we, excuse me, Harwich adopted that back in two thousand and two. They set it at the three percent level. What I'm talking about of diverting the one percent is if we go with that water investment infrastructure fund. And so it's a simple action at town meeting to adopt that act that allows the WIF and then a second article that lets you redirect the funds itself. My experience with community preservation is years past in my hometown of Braintree, where I served on the Community Preservation Committee while I was in between government roles. The reference I was making earlier was for capital outlay as well. That's where I think I have a stronger connection. With regard to economic development, for us in Harwich, our economic development right now is a strong relationship with the Harwich Chamber of Commerce. To be quite frank about it, you know, we don't have the level of industry that you have. We're getting there and we're certainly not the fishing farming town that we were, say, two decades ago. So right now, our economic development is working through the businesses that exist and making sure that we have, although we need to have the regulatory environment on land use and tying to the state requirements. We as towns need to be mindful that, you know, economic development survives when businesses survive. So I would, here in Bellingham, I would want to make sure I'm engaging with any of the organizations, perhaps like Rotary or other type clubs or the Lions, certainly chambers of commerce and trade associations and things like that, to be present, to be mindful, and to understand what support the town can give to support economic development, because then we see the value in that through the revenue that we get from taxes and all that. But it's like anything else I've talked about. I think if there's a framework, you want to have collegial relations, relationships, and you want to have ongoing dialogue. When I was in Braintree, I actually used to do, as town clerk and moderator, a roundtable of businesses just to keep on the pulse of the businesses. So for me, coming from Harwich where we have predominantly residential and then more mom-and-pop commercial, knowing that you have residential, commercial, and industrial, I think I'd be more mindful of what the industrial sector is looking at and what they need and where the regulations are coming from and partnering with any groups that advocate for them.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
If you were appointed, what would you hope to be able to say were your accomplishments during the first year?
That I've understood the language, that I've immersed myself well into the culture, and that we were completely successful for everything that we had going at town meeting. That, you know, that's the shorthand, if you will. And given that it's a year and that this time next year, we've had a successful spring town meeting and we're on our way to a successful fall town meeting. And some of our big projects are proceeding well.
Working with the select board, how do you communicate with the board on large and small projects?
The practice we have in Harwich is, I do, I'm a former town clerk, so there's muscle memory on open meeting law and serial deliberation. We do blind copy emails where I'll send an email to the chair, copy every other member, blind copy, and just give updates if time allows. Otherwise, if there's, if something went awry on a project, I'm on the phone with the chair and between the two of us, we make contact with each of the members. But generally speaking, I do a town administrator report every week at the board meeting at the end where I'm either talking about contracts that I've signed and executed or project status updates and things of that nature. So that's the sort of standard, if you will. The bigger projects, we then might have an agenda topic that gets to it or more of a public announcement. So we'll put language on the agenda that, like our wastewater. We're about to start construction for phase three, so I'll do announcements two weeks in advance. So, dear neighborhood, we're coming to you two weeks from now, that way. So I rely upon the use of the board's agenda at the meeting, certainly the TA report, and then regular communications during the business day.
One big one. Ready?
Sure.
Okay.
I think so.
What happens when you might differ with the board on a situation and how might you handle that?
I don't know that it would be that I differ. I, well, I've understood my role in Harwich, and I think I understand the role here that, you know, I'm responsible for day-to-day operations, and I think that would be the same here. If there was a matter that was debated by the board and there's a conclusion, whether it's three, two, you know, any quantum of vote. three, two, you know, any quantum of vote from unanimous to split vote, it's a vote of the board, and so that becomes um a directive to go forward. If there are serious concerns, um I would rely upon my ability to have conversations with individuals. Um you know, always being mindful of making sure the boards are talking to each other, but um uh I would convey my concerns that they existed in a in a frank and friendly conversation. However, um I know, well, I believe that your system here is similar to other towns where you are the executive officers, you appoint the uh administrative officer and I run the day to day. Um if there are big discussions, I don't look to put my imprint on things, um I don't look to sway the board per se. And I and I hope that doesn't sound cowardly or anything else. What I mean by that is the, and I know as having been a select board member, the five of you are chosen to run the town. And you do so at meetings like this uh with a noticed agenda topic and debate and deliberation. Um I will always, I will continue to be available for board members who want to pick my brain, to want to run scenarios. Um and I always work through the chair so that if there's something where I have a, well, I really can't envision a grave concern. But if there were some, I would find a way to communicate first through the chair and then properly through protocol channels. You are in charge. I I run the day to day, but you are the executives. I support that and I advise you every way I can so you can make in- informed decisions.
Okay. Here is a scenario. What if they were in a board meeting, there was a motion to enter executive session, but you strongly believe um the subject, subject is not exempt. And um, how do you handle that? And especially um you were in the airway.
What was that last part?
If you, they, you didn't know about it. It kind of caught you off guard.
Uh well, only only because, um so I talked about uh early on my um my strength and my belief in governance. My understanding of the open meeting law is um there needs to be notice. And so um I would hope that there is a scenario where it's n- not unexpected. Uh because I think we're uh possibly in danger of uh future charges for uh lack of specificity of notice. I don't mean to talk so clinically, but um if that were to happen where I am now, um I work regularly with the chair. The chair develops the agenda for the board meeting. Um I certainly offer suggestions as the things that I would need the board to talk about or to vote on. Um but the board builds the agenda through the chair. Um if there was a, if something arose and the need to go into, and someone claimed the need to go into executive, um I think it's my responsibility to offer what I believe to be the facts in a straightforward manner and let the board do what they do with that information.
Appreciate that. If you were to background search on you, is there anything we might find which you would like to address at the times that you haven't already?
Uh certainly. I think if you Google me, what you'll find is when I was in Braintree, um I was on leave. I think you'll find a reference that um there was a statement made from somebody at the town that I was placed on leave and they couldn't speak to it. Uh if there was one thing that I would go back and change, it was that, um I would want you to know that when you researched that, um I was on leave because a family member um was going through uh treatment for a life-threatening uh health scenario. During that time, um and it was an extended period of time, uh I did work with the town and we agreed for an abundance of reasons that I wanted to move on. Um but I think when you Google me and what I've heard in other towns, I've I've said, it's not a challenge. Um if you Google me, you're probably going to be confused as to what you found. There's not a lot there, but there is a reference to placed on leave and that's inaccurate. Um it was leave uh for a medical purpose for a family member. Um it was an extended period of time and I think it was the best decision, certainly from me and my family during that time to then move on from the town.
I uh I appreciate the explanation.
Thank you, and thanks for the opportunity.
Oh, thank you so much. Anybody else?
Just one question. Harwich seems like a wonderful community. Cape Cod, they play baseball.
Mariners, golf.
We all want to retire right there or Myrtle Beach, whatever. And Bellingham's a great town. I love Bellingham, been here forty years. Why would you want to leave Harwich?
It isn't so much that I want to leave Harwich, and I and I will tell you what I told the search committee. Um I've already mentioned relocating. I have what I consider to be a retirement asset in Harwich. And I intend to retain that for as long as I can. Uh because when retirement uh comes, if I'm so blessed, uh I'm going to be going to the Mariners games and playing at uh Cape Cod, excuse me, Cranberry Valley and um and captains and all that for golf, still terrible at it. But I I'm and I probably should have opened with it, but I'm here tonight because Bellingham offers an opportunity for me uh on a personal level of where my personal life is going over the next, say, ten or twelve years. Um I am um of an age and I am of a family situation where I have maturing family members and I have aging family members, and the aging family members are off game. And so I'm looking for my next exciting opportunity. I won't hold back that I'm excited about the opportunity to come back to North Warren County um and 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 be in Bellingham. So for me, um this is a great opportunity both personally and professionally um whereby I'm I'm ready for the next step. I'm not going to dissuade anything you said about Cape Cod, but there is something about having to go over a bridge. I I'm familiar with your movie theater and restaurants and um there's not fifteen miles between them. Uh but truly, this uh Bellingham for me represents an opportunity uh for the next phase of my life, both professionally and personally. Uh to take care of the people I need to take care of and and to hopefully be given the opportunity to be challenged and to learn and grow without sacrificing my retirement asset.
One last question, I promise.
Sure.
Um thank you, that was, that was, that was great. Um if I were to pick up the phone and call the the select board members of Harwich, what do you think they might say collectively?
I can tell you what some of them have already said, please don't go.
Okay.
I I would hope I would hope that they would tell you that he really is a government geek um who is passionate about the work that municipal government provides, because I really am. Um I've enjoyed everywhere I've ever been and and most of the experiences that I've ever enjoyed. I think they will tell you that Harwich is a tough place. It's tougher when you live and work there. But I think overall, they would tell you that we as a team are undefeated, if you will, at town meeting, uh which is something I promised them when I came on board because they hadn't had that level of success before. So I think they will tell you that we're doing well a- and and I was a big part of that.
Wh- what does undefeated mean?
So I had said to the board that, you know, if they were, they were tired of going in front of town meeting and losing.
Losing what?
Um articles, uh budgets, uh yeah, my uh uh don't have to go too far afield, but uh I was the uh assistant town administrator designated. I was still working the well fleet, but I was living in Harvard, so I finally had the chance to go to a town meeting. And at that particular town meeting, the operating budget was voted down. I had never experienced that and um I was shocked by that. And so that meeting extended and eventually the budget was adopted. And so uh we haven't had that level of discourse or or discord either. And so what I've said to the board is, and that's what I mean, if I can sort of wrap it all together, the number of days till the next town meeting, I know for you folks is one or but that's critical because that's when everything you're running and managing and creating policies on and everything we're doing as a team day to day is hopefully validated at a town meeting. And so you want to succeed, you want your articles to pass because you've got the pulse of the community, excuse me. That's what I mean by being successful. I shouldn't say win, but
No, no, it's fair.
Um however, in in my five years, there have been um I believe eight town meetings and every budget has passed overwhelmingly, um our capital projects, and we're talking about some major projects. That should be a source of pride for the board and um I try not to be prideful, but that is something I think they will tell you if you call.
Great, thank you. Mr. Chair.
Perfect, thank you very much. Um Joe, do you want to add anything else, any golden remarks? Anything else you want to say?
Uh sure, uh in in the forty-five minutes I have left, right? First of all, and truly, uh thank you, um I and I said that to the search committee. I uh I enjoy this. I I do because we're talking about government and and I love government and most especially local government. There's, there's nothing more tangible and there's nothing more important, and I think you all know that, than local government. Um it's very personal, it's very uh important, it's 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 real. And so um I appreciate um the search committee and going through their process and their questions. I appreciate being here tonight. I hope I've demonstrated to you that um I truly mean what I say when I say I love the work. The four-letter word is job, I could say it that way, but the work is wonderful. Um and to be able to come to a community that seemingly to me is stable, but you're about to have an institution walk away. And that institutional knowledge is critical, and I think I can uh sort of pick up where that's going to leave off. Um I hope I've made um your decisions either very difficult or very easy. Uh but I appreciate the time and I appreciate the question, so thank you for letting me be a part of it. I wish you every success and I would love to work with you folks going forward.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it for your time.
Absolutely.
Thank you, it was definitely a pleasure meeting you as well.
Thank you. May I ask your process going forward after tonight or after I leave?
I think uh you looked at me, I think what we're going to do is reconvene with two excellent candidates here this evening, and I'll just say that ideally, we we always wanted four, right? It doesn't mean we're going to go out and grab two more or whatever. Transparent, we had four, two dropped.
Yeah.
So now we've got a difficult decision to make as as a board because both of you tonight were outstanding. Absolutely, you've made our job difficult and we need to think, do we need to go out and and find two more? Because I think this board unanimously, and I'm not the chair, but you know, I think we we agree, we wanted to have a conversation with four individuals.
Sure.
I think it's it's just our process, it's not a personal thing, it's it's more a business thing, really, on this side.
I appreciate that.
So that's kind of where we're our, where our heads are at, I don't think the board has had time to have a discussion. I have to wait till you leave.
Uh allow me to expedite that? Thank you very much for your time.
All right, thank you.
Excellent, Joe, appreciate it for your time.
Thank you.
Like the, I I appreciate it for the for the comment and like to say that they definitely have great qualities and um your job was an interview and I appreciate that. It's um, I'm just kind of kind of um step back for one second. Do you, anybody would like to add anything before I just make some remarks or uh?
This is, this is difficult.
Yeah.
I I I'd honestly like to take a five-minute rain break.
Yeah.
Because I I made a lot of notes
Yeah.
in the last ten minutes about my thoughts on both candidates, and I was taking a lot of notes, I just I just want to collect and organize it in my brain before saying anymore.
Let's take a five to recess.
Can we do that, Mr. Chair?
Absolutely, actually, and I'd like to. Perfect, um thanks for waiting and uh we definitely needed a kind of little uh sweet recess and a little water break, uh whatever that might be. Um I'm just gonna um before I make my remarks and um I would like to turn uh to my uh board members, if anybody would like to add anything really quickly, please go ahead, do so and um and I'll I'll go, I'll go after that.
All right, I, Mr. Chair, if I may, you guys didn't have, you guys didn't have an easy job. You guys have, um I I'm I'm not new to municipal politics, I've been around municipalities for about eight years now. Um I've been on the couple boards here in town, but not too much. I think you guys have been under the microscope quite a bit on every social media page that you can find for the town of Bellingham.
Yeah.
Uh if it says Bellingham on it, you know, whether it's uh Unplugged, Citizens of Bellingham, Concerned Citizens of Bellingham, Welcome to Bellingham, um you guys have been under the microscope probably more than us. You didn't have an easy job, so I want to thank you all uh for the work you did.
Appreciate it, Mr. Ennis.
Echo the same sentiments, but um you really took the task to heart to find somebody that really was going to appreciate and fit Bellingham the way we hope. So it was really nice to see that empathy and compassion come through in the in the candidate, so I appreciate that. Um and again, it wasn't easy for sure, I can only imagine, but thank you for all the efforts.
I uh I was, I was very pleasantly surprised tonight because I was not sure of what we were getting and to say the same thing, thank you. I mean, we know that you worked very hard and very diligently to come up with the candidates. It was a shame that two of them withdrew because that kind of left us in an odd predicament because we really wanted four, that was what our due diligence was supposed to be about, was to have four candidates for, to to make a decision, and I still feel the same way. As pleased as I am with these two, you know, I still think I still think we should do what we set out to do in our task, and that was to interview four people. And I know that you have others that you can bring forward, and I think that we should do that. That's what we said we were going to do in the general public, and I really believe that's what we should follow and continue to do. Um but the two gentlemen tonight were absolutely exceptional, so thank you, I I appreciate that.
So, yeah, um I echo part, part everyone, what they've said, I think all of you know that I'm, I really respect the work that you've all done. And I respect and I really, the the four candidates, it really, you got down to the best four, it's it's unfortunate that we lost two. Um but the two remaining are outstanding. And you know, one, the one thing that we knew going into this process is that to find candidates as qualified as the four and the final two we talked to tonight is not easy in this state. There are not a lot of experienced Dennis Brains of the world out there looking for work. They're embedded in their their community, they're doing good work, they like it for all the reasons. This process has taken this town a long time to get through. In the last process went through, there were four candidates. We went through using a search committee and at the end, no offers were made to uh either any of them. We started this process again, we went with a different approach, we used internal. I don't think either, you know, pros and cons of using an executive search versus here, but the difference is it was the timing of how people revolt, revolve around positions and jobs, et cetera. It's not always you're going to get two individuals like that. My concern, and 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 I've been in favor of interviewing four, absolutely, I won't, I won't change and waver in that. But my concern is this, and I'll just say it to everyone. My concern is we have two outstanding candidates that presented themselves this evening. And I I personally believe that one you know, really shined in my eyes. The other one was a very, very close second, as I said, they were going to make our job difficult. I'd hate to start a process to bring two more in because now we got to four. So if you start this process again, we'll be looking at the the sixth best, the seventh best, the eighth best, the ninth best, the tenth best. Because maybe as you go through that list, some of them aren't interested in the position. And now you're going to have to filter out that, so my feeling is we're going to be, we're going to have a situation, we're going to have two really good who may say, you know what, thank you, Bellingham, but no, thank you, because you know what, I've given it my best, and now you're considering someone that wasn't even the final four for me to compete
And now you're considering someone that wasn't even the final four for me to compete against. And I, I think we have the risk of losing. One or two of those individuals. For someone that may be our seventh or eighth or ninth, your seventh, eighth or ninth or tenth pick, and I see you nodding your head yes, I think you're agreeing with my logic.
Hundred percent.
And that's my concern because we didn't see those applications. Everything was very quiet, everything was as it was supposed to be. You saw them and you're nodding your head yes, like, to me, it sounds like there's. A massive degree of separation between those two and six, seven, eight, nine, and ten. There is, right?
There is.
Thank you. Yeah, so I just want, yeah, go ahead, go ahead.
And as a member of the search committee, and as we stated when we came to the select board. Week and a half ago and presented the four names, we told you at that time, we had interviewed six. But the disparity between one through four and then five and six. We thought was too broad for the town and what the town administrator position that you designed and put the profile out for. And now if we look back and have to go through the remaining resumes and. As Sahan, you came and spoke at our public meeting, we did evaluate.
Yep.
But at the same token, as, uh, Mr. Martinez said tonight, we're equally, uh, uh, in. Um, a scared state of, are we gonna lose potentially two great candidates that were here today? And they were one of the, the two of the four finalists that we presented to the board. If we have to go back, we have to start more interviews. After the interview process, we then have to do a quick background check through, uh, the investigative services. Reevaluate all that and then have set up another meeting. And unfortunately, we have Thanksgiving next week. So now we're putting this process out into December. We're probably looking more towards the second week before the board would have two additional candidates to interview. With the potential lo- losing of one of the two candidates here.
I'd add to that too, if I, if I may.
Yeah.
We didn't, we weren't set on six. We would have entered, we would have interviewed seven, eight, ten. We weren't set on providing you with four. We would have happily moved forward five or six if that were the case. Um, but there was a clear difference in the, in the four that we presented. It happened to be the number that you guys were set on. That was not in retention, that was not what we were working towards. We would have, you know, happily interviewed more if we had thought that that was what was in the best interest of the town of Bellingham. We would have happily moved along more to you if we thought that that was in the best interest. That wasn't the scenario that we were presented with and we happened on the same number of four.
So, so I just wanted to finish my thought as Mr. Roach at, um, chiming in, thank you very much for the comments, it's it's in line with where I was going. So, we had, we had four, we had two. My, my concern, I I was, we was gonna talk about, we've got the holidays coming up. But forget about all of that. At at the end of the day, I just saw two candidates. That could step right in, it could be town administrators in the town of Bellingham without skipping a beat. One more so than and than the other, I I believe, and I'll and I'll say that name in a bit. And I'll say this, Dennis Rain has given this town, we all agree, thirty-plus years. He has done, he's came, he came back after. An experience we're all aware of, that he had, he didn't have to come back here. He came back here because he loved the town. If anything, we, and Dennis has told us that, you know, there there are candidates that could step right in. You know, there's two reasons. One, Dennis needs to be able to enjoy and step away and do what he wants to do. We know he'll stick around if we ask him to, because that's just the type of individual he is, and we're very lucky to have him. I feel it's what's in the best interest of the town, and every one of this committee has just said how great of a job that committee's done. They just told us their recommendation without giving it directly. They said to us, and we asked them to do it, we've all said they've done a great job. That if they go back out, we're not even gonna come close to what we saw tonight. So, I don't disagree. If if these individuals showed up this evening and they weren't as impressive. I would have asked, let's go find some more. But I think we all agree how impressive both of them were. And and it's okay to switch your line of thinking based upon, like Anne said, and not speaking for Anne, she said this. Wow, it's not what she expected. So maybe if it's not. But we have the benefit of this committee that we appointed, that's always been part of the process, they gave us the best. I'm not suggesting they're gonna do the higher, we are gonna make the recommendation, but I think we need to go on them. We we've given them that, that, we've all agreed in principle that they did an outstanding job. Why go against it? Now, we have two individuals that we can make offers to pretty quickly. And they could step right in within the next, you know, maybe one can step in immediately, the other one has to give a decent notice, but still. I I think that we could potentially lose both of them if we extend this process any further.
Um, Mr. Martinez, I'm, I absolutely agree most of the stuff, uh, you just mentioned that. I am not gonna take anything away, all the hard work you have done. It's, uh, but be promised when we start this process, we were gonna interview at least four candidates. Whatever them might be, whatever the four best out there, we were gonna do it, that's what we're gonna, that's what we're planning to do. I know original plan was four, drop down to three and two. And, um, I don't wanna just basically just go with the two candidates before we interview another two. Because it's, it's at least, we'll show the citizens of Bellingham, we doing our due diligence. And then we are basically just going to two more candidates. Yeah, not just going only two. I understand it is, they are absolutely fantastic, they have, they have great qualities. But you never buy a house, first house you see, you never buy the car first time when you see it. And then, you know, it's your own, your own, you, when you go to college, you visit more than one or two. And then, um, it it might be the same idea, maybe not, but I would like to see at least two more options. Before we move forward. I understand it's a risk, but the life is full with the risks. And, um, and I think, you know, that we need to, we need to, we need to take that risk. And then to see at least two more candidates as soon as when you have time to go through and then we'll just. Expedite it as quick as we can, through the background search and everything.
Right.
Just, I I wanna, I wanna just go out there, you know, it's as we promised, we were gonna go through this process with the four candidates.
But what we did, so, so the community out there can't say, can't accuse this board of not being transparent. Of not participating by getting the town involved, which we have a wonderful committee. So they, the committee, they looked at the fifteen cars first. They looked at the fifteen universities first. They did all of that for us, and then they came back to us. To say, you go and hire someone to, you know, to help with my college search, you hire someone to do that. They go out basically with all the parameters, they bring it in, and then they narrow, they take it in a funnel and they narrow it down. That's exactly what they did. We would have had four. Well, we had, we lost one because they took a job in another town because we weren't able to act faster. If that was the candidate we would have eventually hired, and the other one dropped out for personal, we had the four. We had the four best candidates, so now what you're gonna do is we're gonna go out and we're gonna go through motions. We're gonna waste our valuable time, we're gonna waste their valuable time, and we're gonna waste the candidates' valuable time. Cause in the end, the two new candidates, we find, if they're on that list or the alternative, we start a search all over again. We start from the beginning. We started, we put an ad out in MMA, and we start all over again. We don't wanna do that.
I mean, we don't wanna, we don't wanna rush anything through them, Mr. Martinez, I absolutely agree. What you're trying to say, you know, it's, but I understand, you know, it's, uh, we wanna have Dennis as long as we can. But on the, on the same time, we wanna do our due diligence and then we don't rush it. I understand that there are two great candidates. However, we were supposed to have four candidates to interview and to see the differences are. Even between the two candidates, I mean, you see there are some differences. And that's what we're trying to figure out here. They're both fantastic, I'm not disagreeing in it. And, um, but it's, I I will be more comfortable to have two more into the mix and then make a decision. And that will be, that will be my stance on that. Any, anybody?
Mike, how do you feel?
Mr. Roach.
Let me ask Mike, Mike, how do you feel?
Um, both you guys have extremely valid points. Um, I, I, there, there is one candidate that's sticking out in my head. Um, but it it's not, it's not strong. The other candidate is, in my mind, not even a consideration for the position. Um, I would like to get the thoughts of the one person in the room that has more experience than all of us.
Yes, I'm sitting here because it's your decision.
I I value your opinion.
I, I, this is one that, that I, I, even with the search committee, I stayed out.
Okay.
This is one, you know, I live in town, obviously I have a vested interest, but I want you to deliver, to make the decision on this one.
I, I mean, you guys had had said it, you said there's a stark, there's, there's a stark difference between what we had, is is the difference? Uh, um, are they going to get, do they apply against the town charter? Or is the difference just your own personal opinions? And I kinda wanna hear from the two in the back, because you're looking like you guys wanna say something. But, yeah, 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 I know you guys are in the back, so I I I'd like all of your opinions.
I always wanna say something, so. I just put that out there. Um, look, so, I, the question I would have is, I understand you wanted to see four. Um, and you saw two, and that's because two dropped off. But for me, that's just an arbitrary number versus what are we trying to get to is hiring the best, the best person for this role. So, the question I would put back to you was, did you not see something in these two candidates? That you wanted to see for a town administrator? And if the answer is yes, then it would make logical sense for us to go back and look at the interviews. And and look at the resumes and bring forward some new candidates. If you look at these two candidates and saw that they would be viable, strong candidates. Then it doesn't make sense to go back and just give two more, just so you have four.
I mean, it didn't check with the boxes for me. I mean, it was closing out, but not there. But I think if you have two more, and then it will help me to make a decision. Because as I spoken to you probably individually, it is here, there. And I think what we're trying to do here is, um. To find the next person, gonna be so important for this town's future. And, um, to replace this gentleman over here. And I think, you know, that we owe that much to show entire town. I know, you know, this is the two we have. But it's, we didn't actually miss, you know, the other two, one of them was pulled out, the other one decided to go a different direction. We were just going in the motions, I'll be trying to do things. And, um, i- if if they wanna be really part of Bellingham, and they will be still here. But I definitely will be very comfortable to have two more and to make a decision then.
So to help us, if we were to go back, you said there was something you didn't see in in either of these, can you quantify that? So as we go back to, I mean, look at the resumes and interview the candidates, it'll help us bring forward. The gap that that was potentially missing or missed too.
I mean, I think I highlighted that, you know, that when I had a conversation on a public forum, um, yesterday. As well as what I was giving the guidelines to. And, um, just, you know, I just, I don't know, just to speak over again.
Excuse me, I'm, I'm gonna, Mr. Chairman, you didn't give us details yesterday. You came in yesterday to our meeting and you asked us to consider trying to find two more candidates. We gave you some explanation, and when the search committee was formed.
Yep.
It was asked, try to get four candidates. It was not a mandate. Please, I will have Hillary pull up the minutes. It was not a mandate of four. We went through twenty-five resumes. We had six categories for each candidate. That a five-member board rated everybody on their resumes, because we didn't get to talk to everybody. We went through, we tabulated all that through, we had open discussion for hours. We brought in six people.
Yep.
We then took the four and brought them to you folks. The morning of bringing you the fourth. Which we can't use their name because they dropped out just prior to, then the fourth one took another job.
Yep.
So unfortunately, so, but based upon the criteria set forth by the board.
Yep.
The search committee that we put forth, these are the strongest candidates. There is not a resume in here that without you saying, well, maybe you can not look at the TA for five to seven years. That's what you asked yesterday in our meeting. You said, maybe you don't have to have the TA title. That's lessening, that's lessening the criteria that we set forth for. And we feel like we put the best here and we're afraid the town's gonna lose. Or at least, this is my opinion now, I'm saying some things on them.
It, so, the other candidates are going against the chart.
No, that's not what I said.
Okay, I just, that's, I just wanted to, that, that's a kind of, that's a, that's an important thing.
It is, it is.
Yeah, no, if I'm going against candidates, doesn't, they don't fulfill the need of the position. Based upon the write-up of what we were looking, the town was looking for in that write-up. And then how we evaluated twenty-five candidates.
So they're not, they're not qualified for the position?
No, I wouldn't say that. I would say.
But you, you're just, you're saying they they don't meet the the criteria that was set for them in the the posting that I saw on MMA. They don't meet that criteria.
No, that's, let me, they, I think we had, out of the twenty-five, many met the criteria. That's published for the, for the role. I think there were people that were more qualified and people that were less qualified. And so what we brought forward were the people that we thought were the most qualified for the role. Um, to, to interview and look at. So it's a spectrum, right? Most to least, and so there are people in between based upon the review of the resumes. Um, certainly, but it's not that they weren't qualified, it's maybe the people that were the most qualified.
You, based off of your experience, are you satisfied with what we have?
I am.
Okay, um, I just wanna say one more thing, just to answer Anne's question. If you are asking me if I am ready to go with a motion, I am with hesitation.
Okay, but before we do. So I guess I'm stuck, right? Because if candidate A comes and candidate B doesn't come, do we just go candidate A? Because we have nothing else to compare it to. Again, you know what I'm saying, it was a personal thing, candidate B couldn't come tonight, it doesn't make the personal interview. Do we just say, okay, candidate A, you get it? They both were compelling. They were very different from what I read in their resume and what I did in my own search. So I think what I saw in person was very different from what I read, and so I'm, I'm stuck with that. Um, are they turnkey? Yeah, pretty much they're turnkey, um. But I'm stuck to say, two, two couldn't make it out of the four we wanted to compare and contrast. And is that what we're missing in the opportunity of having? I hate to go back and say, I I would like to have more to have that comparison, I don't wanna be that way, but they didn't. Didn't come in person as I saw them on the paper, and I guess I was a little torn that way, so.
Question, this is my question, my question. Cause I'm the one who, I was sitting here telling you, I'm, you know, I really think we should have four, but but now you've made me think, so. If we were to go back, you, you, you said that you had a total of six, correct, that were.
We interviewed.
Right.
Brought in.
So now, four of them you sent out and then two disappeared, and so we had our two. And I was very, very pleased, very pleased with the two you brought. I I can't tell you how absolutely surprised I was, to be very honest with you. Um, but what would it take to, do you interview the six? So what happened is five and six just so far apart that we couldn't, that you've already interviewed them. So what would the process be? If you've already interviewed them, you already, did you already do the background checks on them? Because you brought them in to be interviewed, to bring them up forward? No.
We did not, because we didn't, they were not, we didn't feel that we were bringing them forward to the.
Okay, I see.
Committee, so we did not do.
So what you're saying is that five and six, there was a big gap between four and five or four, five and six. But the top four were.
But the top four were. But, but really, they really, and they stood out over five and six. You brought us, you did bring us four.
Yes.
And I know it wasn't a mandate, I mean, we did, we wanted the best.
Yeah.
But it's unfortunate that one took a position somewhere else and one decided not to pursue it. So then we were down to two. And you're not saying that they were both number one and number two, you're just saying there were two of the four. Is what you're saying, just so. Yeah, so to, to me, if, if, if I were to, the motion that I would make. For one of the individuals would be to make that motion to do a thorough background check, not just the. Social media check that's been done, but to do a pending a thorough background check. Um, on that individual, because I think then at least. Hey, we're gonna, we're making a decision, and, and if the background check doesn't, doesn't cut it. Then we still have another person to, 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 to go to possibly, or. Again, the, the last thing we want to do is start a search again. But if, but if you're really, and I trust what you're saying, if five and six were that far apart from the top four. Then, I mean, that, to me, that this answers it right there, but I, I absolutely would want a thorough, thorough background check. On the candidate.
I'm just gonna go back to the question you were asking me earlier, and then Mr. N S E wanted to talk, and then he wanted to make some remarks. And uh, what I was trying to say was, I know we were looking at six candidates. Originally, obviously. We don't know which way they ranked, but I know, I'm, I'm pretty sure of what I saw. Even the ones we lost and some of the. Some of the researchers I have been doing it, they were very strong candidates too. And you just mentioned that the ones we just saw, they were number one and two. Thank you very much.
One of four. We presented four.
We lost the number two and three, but we have another two candidates. And I think at least.
We did not rank them specifically. No, you keep bringing up numbers. And this, Mr. Kim, and this is where I want to be very transparent.
Yeah.
We gave no indication of any of these candidates of their ranking of this committee. And we have not spoken of that.
One and four, that was just, just speculation, you know, it's, no. I thought we said one and four.
One through four. Candidates.
Yeah.
One backed out the morning of. The select board meeting that we're presenting, and then the other one took another position. So that right there tells you the quality of that person, they went and took on a position in another town. Uh, that was represented, it, so it's. I, I think that gives you the foresight of the, the quality of the candidates that we've gone through out of the twenty-five resumes.
I mean, we all know this is a very small market, I mean, it's a small. Small niche market, and I'm, I'm glad you just said that, that's what I was saying. When I came and visited you, and then when I said the diamond in the rough. And uh, if we go back and look at it thirty-something years ago, Mr. Frame wasn't gonna be basically, look through all the applications too. Once they meet him in person and they saw the brightness in him, and then, I mean, took us thirty-something years. That's what I was, when I was making my remarks, that's what I was just saying to you guys. And then sometimes, you know, having a job experience is fantastic, but they haven't a great educational background. And then you got the college degree, master's degree, that's what we're looking for, that's what the charter indicates. And then it says five to seven or three to five. And uh, that's what we're looking for, and I think that's what we said in the guidelines when we were looking. Um, beginning of this process. And as I said, it is, I'm not saying that those two candidates are not great, I think they got, they have great qualities. But I think it is something, you know, a- as I said, I'm strongly. Saying again, because we had four candidates on the first round. When we had interviews, myself and Ann, as well as Mr. N S E was here. And uh, they were very close to. It's kind of eye opener when you see. Particularly for this niche market and then try to find a person to replace Mr. Frame. You are not going on the two candidates as well as they might be qualified, I think we need to see two more. And they just to see it, because that's what actually originally, that's what presented to us, and that's what, that's the direction that we said we were gonna go. And that's what we promised to do. That's all I'm saying here.
Just one comment to your point.
Yeah.
I can assure you.
Yeah.
We considered the diamond in the rough. I can assure you, we considered that. And um, sadly, that was one of our four.
It's, it's pretty clear that we're, um, we're, we're getting. How, how can I put this gently? We're getting a little bit of pushback from, from the board, from the committee that we formed. I, I didn't think, I, I, I didn't, I didn't think, I didn't think that was happening. And we, we entrusted this board with the best interest of the town, they do, we just commented them, as Mr. Tietz pointed out. Um, I, I, I don't normally go, go against you with this, but we are getting pushed back. From them basically saying that what we get is what we, what we got is what we have. I'm, but I, I think, I think what's gonna be happening is, is, is exactly what happened last time. We're, we're, we're gonna be in, in a little bit of a stalemate. Um, so I, I think you just gotta be mindful of that.
And so, and, and it's kind of the level of thinking that I've had, I mean, we can go back and forth and we're gonna debate this forever, I, I believe that. The recommendation that's been made, they haven't made a recommendation, but before they presented us. And, and we've all admired all their work and et cetera, we hear what they're saying tonight, they've done an outstanding job. Uh, I, I want to make a recommendation, um, based upon the interviews tonight for one individual. Barring a thorough background search, and I'm gonna ask Dennis. This question before I make the motion, can you, what would consist of a thorough?
The, we, we have the firm, the, the same, it's just the next level, so we, we have a firm in place that can.
And, and, and that would be, so my thinking too is, you know, there's one thing about references. References are, yeah, of course they're gonna talk great about me. What I want to do is, I want to talk to people that aren't on the reference list. You know, both of these individuals are town administrators and they're select boards, and not all the select board members. And, and, and fire chiefs and police chiefs are on their recommendation. If we do, but to me, a thorough background search is to have a conversation. With those other individuals that aren't on the references, because we know they're gonna give them glowing references. I mean, that's just, that's just the business. What you need to find out is to do a little bit of that type of digging. Of individuals that they've actually worked with for any length of time. And I think that's what I, was, that's to me is a background search, not just looking at their finances, not just looking at. That type of stuff, which is part of a background search. I want to make sure that we spend a little bit of time doing that.
Yeah, if you saw what Paradigm did, Paradigm gave you that type of information, so.
That's the type, I didn't see it, Dennis, I wasn't on the board at the time, but I would like to see that type of information, I think that would be helpful, so. You know, being that, as, as I.
Let's hold, hold the line.
Yeah, I think this, yeah.
Alright, so I, I am, I am. I'm sitting here listening to everybody, including this committee, which I have a lot of respect for, and I understand exactly what you're saying. Because we went through this the last time, believe me, I don't want to go through this again. I am going to. Go back on what I said, and I will take. This committee's recommendation because. I think we need to move forward. I really think we need to move forward, guys. And I think that if we do a completely thorough. Depending who he says. Search. On, on, and I, I'm. Hopefully gonna, we're gonna get the right person. And do a search, and we can also set the parameters on what we want to see in contract. That contract can be set the way we want it set.
You go into executive session with that individual.
Yes.
But I want to interrupt for a second, because if you're gonna make a name of one person, then you've made that decision.
I'm not making the decision.
You make that motion to do the full-on search, correct?
Yeah.
You're, you're elevating your choice.
We only have three candidates right now anyway, so if you're gonna do it, just. Yeah, I didn't want to just, you know, just go with the two. Stance, but I'm listening to everybody else right now, nice and, um, quietly.
I, I, I just, I, I just want to say so, huh, like.
Yeah.
I mean, the, I, I just need to reiterate the, the committee that we put into place.
Yeah, absolutely.
Outright saying, there, there is, there is.
There's nothing else.
There's nothing else. Let me just, I don't want to put you all on the spot. If you think there is nobody else, raise your hand. Right.
I have no problem.
I wanna. So Han's point around a diamond in the rough. Is a fair point, right?
There could. Can I stop you one second? You're in HR, right? So, you got what I'm saying, am I right?
She is.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I, I, I think it's a fair, fair point. Twenty-five resumes, we assessed twenty-five resumes. Fairly and equitably. Um, and. You know, what? And you mentioned, right, you saw the resumes, yet you were pleasantly surprised by what interview. How they interview, right? And so are there individuals in the bank of twenty-five? That could pleasantly surprise us if we were to bring them forward?
We, we did put the diamond in the rough in the mix, though.
But there could be more diamonds, lots of diamonds and rough. So sure, but for me, it's a risk versus reward scenario. And that's really where it comes to for me, which is the risk is we're going to go back, we're going to. Pull up the next, call it, I think we probably have to do five. Interview five candidates, schedule and interview five candidates. So that we feel confident we could present you with at least two more, right? It's a numbers game. And so in that process, you risk a couple of things, you risk two strong candidates. Finding another job, falling out, falling out for whatever reason, telling Bellingham, we don't like handling run things, so we're leaving. And, and you, the candidate experience isn't good for the, for the candidate, so you run those risks. Are they insurmountable? No, but it's a risk versus reward to say. What, we could provide you the three more and. They're almost as good as the two you saw today. So that's what it comes down to, you're, you're the board, ultimately you need to make the decision what's right for the town, but that's, you've kind of heard our perspectives.
Three out of the four, basically said. And then you're very optimistic.
I never say never, right? I never say.
To, to me, the three out of the four, I, I, as, as much as, again, this is probably the only time I'm gonna do this. I'm going to side with, with, what, what our, our board.
That's why we deliberated, obviously, we, what we're trying to do here and what we do right now. It's as I said it many times, because we do care. And this is our home, and this is where we live, we're making decisions. When I envisioned this process at the beginning, and I know, I had quite a bit of resistance to go with this process. But as I mentioned that the other night, I truly believe when you call. Help in town of Bellingham, we need to do this, and then the town of Bellingham always steps up. And this is one of those situations, I mean, we got, we are not gonna agree on everything. That's what I'm trying to make my, you know, it's, trying to make my point here, we gotta agree to disagree. And it's gonna be, have some discussions, deliberations, the decisions we're trying to make here, it's gonna set the town. Five, ten years, fifteen years, build the long gun, and then, you know, maybe that person still will be here, that's what we're trying to do here. I mean, as I said, I'm just turning it to you again, because I'm just saying, you know, to replace this gentleman here, it's not gonna be easy.
We will not, we will never replace.
But it comes to that Shannon's point, it's, um. If there are people out there, but if you say, no, I'm not gonna just, you know, go on it, I'm just one voice here. And um, it just, if you say it might be some people out there in that pile. And I think we should just see it, it's, um, I mean, what I heard from the two candidates. Seems like, you know, this is their dream job. And uh, for boredom. And um, to me, and I think it is, I mean, what we're trying to do here, we're deliberating, discussing it. I, I believe in my eyes, we showing it to them, we do on our due diligence, and if they accept it. Positions down the road, and then we showing it to them how much we do get. That's all I'm gonna say, and I'm not gonna say anything else.
But we're, we're.
And that's what I'm trying to do here.
We're running the risk, if we do send them back to the well of, of these candidates. Basically doing exactly what happened last time, withdrawing themselves, you know, so I'm sorry, sir.
It's okay, I'm, I'm just gonna play a little bit of devil's advocate, Kim, and. You made mention of a diamond in the rough in replacing Dennis after thirty years.
Yeah.
I've lived around here for all my life.
Yeah.
I grew up in Medway. I moved to Bellingham when Dennis took over.
Yeah.
Thirty years ago, this town was totally different. And now what we're looking to do, and I know you said someone gave Dennis a shot.
Yeah.
Right now, our town has evolved so much, and we as a committee. Looked at it seriously that we are not only hiring a town administrator, we're hiring the replacement for Dennis. And that person has to be able to. Rise to the level and try to, and I mean, and I mean it in all honesty, try to. Go to the levels that Dennis has helped this town become. And that's how we looked at it collectively, when we're looking at people and looking at resumes. Are they gonna fit with Bellingham? When we interviewed some folks, we didn't think. They were a good fit for the town of Bellingham.
Yeah.
That's how we got to the four.
Yeah. So let's, I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm just gonna say one thing and then you know, so I, I know. We are trying to do the right thing in hard here, and then let's not just waste our more time anymore. I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna put it out there. So I'm just gonna say, I'm gonna make a motion, if this is me saying, obviously we got other voices on the board. And um, I'm gonna make a motion to ask the search committee. To uh, move two more applicants to be interviewed. And if there is a second, we move forward, if not, I'll just stay silent.
So, second.
So. You have a motion, we have a second. And um, I'm gonna ask the board, hold on, they were saying aye on this motion. I say aye.
Nay.
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 Perfect, be true. So our motion is dropped, and then we move to the next one, let's not waste our time, and then let's move forward then. And I appreciate it. There is no hard feelings, and obviously, this is, this is a democracy, there's obviously one voice. And then uh, we're trying to move the town forward. That's it. And um, that's what I promised, that's what I'm gonna do, and then um, anyways possible.
This, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion. Uh, to enter discussions with Mr. Powers.
You got a motion? Is there a second? So. There is. No motion? No, no second, no second, um. Mr. N S E, appreciate it. Um, is there anybody else who would like to make a motion and we can move forward?
I, I'd like, I'd like to make a motion, um, from Mr. Kudair. That we entered discussions. Um, with him for the position of town administrator with a absolute thorough background search. To, you know, barring the acceptance of the background search, then we um, would move to. Uh, make an offer, go into, into, uh, executive session to negotiate.
Second.
So we got first, we got second. Hold on, they were saying. Aye.
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 Here we go.
Say, um. Nay on that one too, and I think it is, we need to, we need to deliberate more, obviously, as I said, we don't want to lose two candidates.
Might I make a suggestion? There was a lot of information shared tonight from both the candidates.
Yeah.
The committee.
Yeah.
In between ourselves, why don't we regroup? And then we got this motion again. I know everyone feels very passionate about one hand or another, either we do both thorough background checks. Or we don't do it all. But I think, I think you can't make a decision with all the information that they presented tonight.
So can I make a motion to gather more information on the two candidates and then we discuss it further?
Just one thing, obviously, we need to go to the candidates and. Let them know the situation and that we will be looking to do a thorough background check. The only background check that we have spoken to them about was the, was known as a soft check, if we're gonna do a hard check now, it's. It's much more thorough, so both candidates were going to. So both candidates, we're going to have to go and and let them know uh, without really knowing if either one of them, I mean, they're sitting there not knowing either one of them have the votes. So typically, you wouldn't do that level of a check until you know, you know, who you're, who you're going to offer.
I mean, we have the committees full court press on it. We have half and half.
Yeah.
Do you know what I'm saying? Like, what, 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 how do you, what would you get out, how do you get out of this? Like, how do you move forward?
So I'll be, I'll, I mean, if it's that the case then you need some, if you're gonna do, if you're gonna do the full background check, not particular one candidate, if you're gonna do, if you're gonna do them both, and then we should do them both.
Well, you can't.
Actually, you can. So so we can make a motion to say, listen, we wanna, we, you know, listen, it was this close. The board is undecided. There's a, there's part of the board that wants, one part of the board wants the other. There's no reason we can't just say to them, it's that close. Gentlemen, you're both fantastic. The board is split. All right, what we wanna do is do a thorough background search on the both of you. Pending the, the outcome of the background search, we're gonna make an offer to one of the two of you.
I mean.
That that that's what we could do. And then barring the background search, whatever comes back, then we go from, we go from there.
I mean, the only thing they can say yes or no, obviously, is obviously, we were gonna do that eventually, has to be done, you know, before, before they get the job.
Listen, they, they said right here, if you Google and you aren't gonna find anything.
Yeah.
They opened up the opportunity for us to do that, right? That was, that was an internet search. We did the social media search, but now we wanna do a, do a deeper background search. It's that close. They they're, they're that, they're that qualified. If you present it in that fashion, they should have no problem with it.
If the board in a position to say that barring nothing's on surface with the background check, that you are going to appoint one of these two individuals? Because if we go and do a thorough background check, there's nothing found and still there are three votes, that's awful disingenuous.
I can, this town will be really ripping at us.
I can, I can, I can go, I'll go on record saying if everything comes back clear, I will support Mr. Martinez's search uh, recommendation.
All right, but that's just, I can't, I can't. Yeah, yeah. I I I agree. And I was gonna make that motion initially, but I, I just was trying to sense the room. But I I think that we do that. With the motion is that we do a thorough back, we we inform the candidates that the uh, it was very, very close. The board was split. They both did a great job. We all have our own thoughts. We're entitled to our own opinions, right? And and but we, so we wanna do a thorough background search on the both of them, and then barring that, we're gonna make a we'll make uh, an offer to one of the two.
I think that's the best way.
I mean, this is the fairest thing, it is, I think you can't say this. I think, you know.
And I think that too, like Jen said, it's true. It gives us time to regroup a little bit.
Are you guys okay with that?
Yes. And just to be honest, they already know. Because both of them have said that they've watched meetings. So they are very, they are very in tune to the town. So if they, if they not watching it now, they will probably.
I just want, I want you to feel, like, this is your project. So I I want you to feel, but I don't want you to think that any of us are trying to exclude you or or put your feelings down or anything like that. Uh, again, like I said, we're very appreciative of all the hard work that you did. I mean, I I think you're a H R professional too, if I'm not mistaken.
I just look, I, I'm gonna speak for the committee without.
Yeah.
Look, we we feel the appreciation from the board for the work that we did. That's certainly not in question. Um, I think we enjoyed the work. We enjoyed the process and being a part of it. So thank you for allowing us that opportunity. Um, but at the end of the day, we also recognize that you're, you're the board, you're the select board. You guys made good decisions and we brought forward two very strong candidates that we felt we really agreed about. Um, and I hate to say it, but you guys have the tough decisions to to decide which one is is the best pick for um, Dennis's replacement. And so you don't always get in a position where you have two great candidates to choose from. It's a winner's problem as far as I'm concerned. Um, and you know, the approach that you take seems reasonable. Like, if you need to figure out kind of what that thorough background search exactly is, I'm sure you're gonna have to articulate that to both candidates.
Yeah.
So I I just wanted to finish off, I'll say one last thing, promise. Um, and it's really based on what Mr. Roach was saying, and that is, uh, and and it was in my notes to say something along these lines. Where we are today is a community in Bellingham with all the economic development, with all the land use stuff. There's, there's a lot of very sophisticated slash complicated stuff going on. And it's, it's, Dennis has been part of this community for many, many years. The reason why I I um, I I looked at, they're both probably both, the reason why I looked at Cordair is because Northborough has gone through all of that stuff before we went through all of that. With, you know, fidelity and Amazon, all of that. He he's, he's lived it, he's breathed it, he's worked it, he's been there, he's done that. And it's different than what you have in Harwich. Northborough was very different than Harwich. So it wasn't that I'm taking anything away from, from Mr. Powers. I'm not at all. But based upon Dennis leaving, it's a matter of taking that person based upon what Bellingham is today and what we need today as a, as a leader. I think it's, Mr. Cordair was is stronger in that area. He covers more of the checkboxes for everything that we're working on from negotiations, all of that. Just think he has a lot more experience there. They can budget, they can do all the, you know, they, they can do all the normal things. If there's a, there's a difference between, you know, the two of them in in that area. And I think it was thirty years ago and Bellingham had a twenty million dollar budget. It's very different than an eighty million dollar budget and all the complex things that are going on in this town today. And that's why, that's why I think that the fit that you have, you 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 right sized it. You really did.
Okay, um, let's just, not to cut. So just, I reagreed and it's um, we're gonna move forward to background checks and then uh, we're gonna reach out to candidates.
I already made that motion, but.
But not just for the one candidate. But I think, you know, for the fairness of the process, it's obviously, you know, we have to, we have to do them both. And um, and then let's see what the outcome will be. They might agree, they might disagree, and then um, and then um, if they disagree, it might be some something, and if they agree, maybe um, we'll see what we got with, you know.
Mr. May, I just share my, my, just my one thought with Mr. Powers. Um, that that one selling point is that he was going to come and be a part of this community.
Yeah.
Yeah, I I knew that, absolutely.
That was, that was it for me.
Okay, so um, can we make, remake the motion and then a second and then move forward?
I'll second the motion.
So we, what's forward, more than I got.
So the motion was that we do a thorough back, we we inform the candidates that we're, that we're divided and that we wanna do a thorough background search on the bulk of the candidates. And then pending the background searches, we'll be prepared to make an offer to one of the two.
Okay, and we got first, we got second. And um, hold on favor.
Aye.
Aye.
I'm gonna go against it, but it doesn't really matter.
Yeah, it's not, it's not, you know.
That's fine.
Okay, and um, so you'll reach out to the candidates, and then we'll take it from there. And um, so we'll um, we'll do our, we are doing our due diligence and um, as I said, we deliberate, we are agreeing, disagreeing, you know, it's obviously we're all trying to do the right thing here for the future of the town. And um, so we're gonna ask that question to our candidates. Uh, maybe Mr. Roach mentioned that, maybe they might be watching. And um, if they wanna be part of it, and um, obviously, they're gonna move forward with this process. And if they don't, and then um, we'll go from there. And I think this will uh, will uh, fill our agenda of the evening. And um.
Make a motion to a chair.
You got a motion? Is there a second? Yeah, we got first, we got second. Hold on favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, perfect. And um.
Thank you all.